I did.
Good afternoon. Let's stand for the pledge in a moment of silence, Commissioner Lautner.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer is absent with prior notice. Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Present.
Commissioner Alguire.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a proposed agenda in front of us. We did add the county clerk on there because of some election day, election year requirements and some cost implications with that, and the clerk will be presenting that. Anybody want to make a motion to approve or suggest a change?
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved 6-0. Thank you. We're now at that part in the meeting, and thank you for coming to the public. If there is anybody that would like to make public comment, you do have three minutes allowed to do that, and just raise your hand and we'll recognize you. Well, thank you for coming, everybody. Any commissioner comment? Well, we'll get right into the agenda, and Deb, you want to introduce us?
Well, this is round two, if you will, of our budget discussions from the standpoint of just working through all of the different departments and the different components of the budget. So we had our first session on Tuesday, and this is the next level, and we anticipate there will be at least one more session. So I think that is kind of where we are. And, okay, so I think we can move on to item A.
Okay, well, we will go with the county clerk. Thanks, Michelle, for being here. And you're just back from a conference, I believe.
So all, Kathy is just handling her blank calendar.
Thank you.
With days of 24. You have a box on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have a prepared budget increase, but I'm more looking for counties' census that I need to get a feel from the board. This is your building. As you know, with the constitutional changes that were passed, we're going to have in 2024 what's called early voting. And there are several alternatives for early voting, and we were able to yesterday meet with all the township clerks with the exception of one. And where we're, because we don't know how this is going to technically play out and how many people are going to use this, I made it really clear that I am not interested intentionally or unintentionally stepping on the statutory duties of any township clerk, because this really does fall on townships. However, that being said, there is a real push being made by the legislature and others to look for economies of scale. So when I say that, there's $30 million that has been allotted statewide to cover anticipated costs for this. And all awards, as well as the grant request, is best to brick the county clerk, maybe three of us, to put all the anticipated costs forward, which is really great. They want it by September 8th, but we don't know what metric they're using to determine how much money will be available. But again, they're looking for economies of scale. And what they're looking for is to get cooperation, to have as many jurisdictions for this early voting as possible. So if we see a jurisdiction that's having many jurisdictions gathered together for these nine days, the chances of us getting the funding is far better than if a town, if in our country, if 11 townships decided to open 11 early voting sites. They're not equipped really to do that. A couple of them are, a couple of them couldn't, but most of them are not. So what we talked about yesterday is, and I have lots of agreements that were on quite strict timelines. I've got a county agreement, municipal, single jurisdiction. No one, in my understanding in this county, wishes to go as a single jurisdiction, meaning no one township wishes to pick this up. There is definitely a strong consensus among all the townships to have me as involved as possible. That means that there's some things I'm not going to do. I'm just, I'm not going to burn in our election condition, which is a tough treasure in here, because I certainly do not speak to him. I'm going to talk to them about this tomorrow. I don't think we're in a position that we want to hire any election workers. That's something that's best to do with township clerks. But that being said, what we need to do is they would like to start out with one jurisdiction for early voting, at least for the presidential. We've got several questions I have to call the state about if we want to use this facility to do that. But before I can just blatantly agree to that, I already use a facility for multiple election trainings anyway, and we have to use it for even more next year. And so part of the reason, I just wanted to give you a little overview of this, so if you cannot or shake your head at me, I get a feeling. For early voting, we will have to get, we will follow this through the state as to see what kind of funding we get at. I know that we're going to get at least one or two. We have to have a new tabulator, we have to have a new vault of a vat, and we have a new laptop. The laptops that are used in early voting cannot be utilized on election day. I mean, they might be in the next election, if you, but for early voting, we need to have all new pieces of equipment. Yes?
What was the second thing you said, a vault?
A vat, an ATV voter assist terminal. It's what you use for handicap voters or anyone who feels that they need to use the touchscreen.
Okay.
But it will also be a way to produce ballots for jurisdictions that choose to use a more of a voter on the man ballot instead of president, but then I count to here all 30 or 28 ballots that are available, because we've got so many splits.
Okay.
And then a laptop. The state's going to look at those, because there are some differences in early voting compared to same-day voting. We want to ask for three of those. We're looking about $13,000, but we want to try and get asked for three. I don't know what the matrix management need to know is the state going to reimburse us for one, or reimburses for two. I think it's prudent to ask for three. If I actually could do it, I want, I would ask for four, because it depends on how many precincts you're putting through these. And whether the money comes through the state or it comes through us, it's still tax paid out, we know that. But we have to have, this is not optional, we're going to have to have the equipment. I have to submit the grant, so I'm looking to see if we need additional, that I'm going to have to buy it, and whether or not I can build townships that for a portion of that, I do not know. But this is kind of a heads up to you now. So that's part of it.
So, excuse me, I'm sorry. A vat, a tabulator, a laptop on what?
A tabulator, a vat, and a laptop.
Oh, I thought there were four things.
No. Well, there's a lot more things. There's additional voting booths, there's the, oh, my mind just went back. The thing to put the ballots in and the night seal that are all secure.
Ballot, yeah.
Ballot, thank you. There's scanners for scanning people's driver's licenses, you know, we need to order a couple more of those. And there's a whole list of supplies that you need. Those are, you know, that's disposable costs as far as I'm concerned. But when I'm looking at using space in this building, I mean, it does make sense. We have, we're ADA accessible, we have parking. For early voting, you have to have Wi-Fi. If you do not have Wi-Fi for early voting, you cannot be a site. That's much different than election day. Because of the complications, not complications, because of the way early voting runs, we have to be running these precincts as live. We cannot be taking any risks of a voter coming in and voting in the early voting site and then somehow going and getting a ballot and saying they haven't done. So we will be live when we are doing this. We are not live on election day. We have new sort, we have security in place to handle it, but it's much different than early voting. So.
So when my neighbor comes in, votes, it's immediately marked as having voted at that moment?
And I don't want to get into all the details, because there are differences for ADA voters from early voting in February to absentee voters that vote in August. The legislation will be changing, so there's going to be separate rules. Anyone in order to prevent to work on an early voting site is going to have to have mandatory training, which I figure will be spread out over three to five different training sessions. Plus, for same-day voting, the actual day of the presidential primary, for example, those voters all need to be retrained. So what I'm looking at is in order to do this here, and I do think we have the room, but I do need some, I can't just go and take over all these rooms, or a room. So let's just, if you look at your calendar for February, as of right now, there are no changes, but the presidential primary is tentatively scheduled for February 27th. Early voting would start on February 17th and go through Sunday the 25th. And then we'd have to have a prep date on 16th. Yes, it does go on Saturdays, it goes on Sundays, it goes on weekends. It's nine days, it's eight hours, so you're looking for consistency. And then I would have training probably the week of February 5th, which is just normal and really service rooms. We'll get earlier if I can. Then when we get to May 7th, historically, it also is an election day. Usually we only want to request that date if we're in school. It is a consensus, my recommendation, consensus with the clerks. We are not doing nine days of early voting. We're not required to. It's not a state or federal election. This is huge undertaking, so we're not going to do that. And we also want less confusion for voters. We're already going to have enough within the early voting sites, and people get confused about where they should go unless they're focused on that one site.
So the nine days is only for federal elections?
Federal, state. Now, and nine is the minimum. There are jurisdictions in Michigan that are doing 21 days, 22, that don't seem to be real popular amongst anyone doing this. And I don't believe we need staff. In August, the primary, as of right now, there doesn't seem to be legislative movement is August 6th, which means early voting will start July 27th and run through Sunday, August 4th. We're going to have to set up again on the 26th. November election is scheduled for November 14th, November 5th. And early voting starts on Saturday the 26th, will set up on the 25th, and runs through November 3rd. Other dates, I mean, I could give you more dates, but it's really not relevant, because it's just part of the stage for me. I have the other space, I have to do that.
Why not November 4th?
I'm sorry, what?
Why not November 4th?
Because there can be no early voting on the Monday prior to the election. The early voting ends on the Sunday before the election at the time, where there's just security precautions every step of the way.
Okay.
So once that early voting is done on Sunday, this emergency voting, that if necessary, can take place with the township clerk, someone's in the hospital or whatever the case may be. Because of this and the way it all runs, there's even different deadlines of when absentee ballots have to be submitted based on how the laws, and they're going to change between February and August. But I need to know, it makes sense to have it here? The clerks are supportive of it being here? But with this comes, with the addition of early voting, and it's kind of trifle, I'm going to need extra staff for 2024. I'm not saying definitely, I'm not, I don't need something I don't take. But I think I'm going to need someone in three to four days to be, because I can't bring these type of workers in. The experience of early voting has to be similar to that that a voter would experience in a precinct on election day, which means you're working three to five people. It's going to be a minimum of a 10-hour day, because the polls have to be open for eight hours, but you've got your pre-working, you have your back with your security services. Also, I don't know that we'll find the same people willing to give up their weekends and work nine days in a row. We'll also have overtime issues. The townships are aware of, the state is going to look at what consolidation you've done. They're only going to be reimbursing $15,000 an hour at this point for worker. I would give a fine for workers for $15,000 an hour, one's paying $18,000, one's paying as high as $25,000. But we also have to have some sort of political splits. But political splits does not mean you have to belong to a party. It means if you select your employee, yourself doesn't have to. But those are just kind of where we're going right now. I've got to request the equipment. We want to go high and see what we get. Some jurisdictions and some parts of the state, they just are going to accept the responsibility if they have to pay whatever it costs to get this done. So I want to be able to request at least three units, which I don't know that I need, I don't need necessarily permission for, but I just want to keep you on board because it does involve money. And I've got several questions to the state if we get more. I'm hoping we can give two or at least two, or we know in the future, if this is used a lot, we may go to a second site and that'd be Elmwood Township, because Elmwood Township needs the county. Doesn't mean everyone goes from there, but you gotta go up 72 or you gotta come out 22 if you're up there. But we're also trying to be aware of the difference in distance from this, you know, empire up to the tip of the Elmwood Township, too. So I guess my first question, would you have questions for me first?
How much space would you tie up for these?
A room.
A room?
A room. I mean, I was trying to look at the dates to see what falls. My thoughts, because you are running this on Saturday and Sunday, and we are, one time I can say we're at an advantage, but we don't have security at the door. Because if we did have the security at the door, we probably would not use this place, because we don't want that to be the first thing their voters see. We would just be like any other precinct. If we run into a problem, we call 911. We're not, you know, so that's an advantage. On the weekends, this really is ideal because of the flow of how you can get voters making calls. It would be probably the lower level, you know. I mean, it has to be big enough to set up your precincts. We're not going to be crammed in like some of our townships, that's just not that good a day, just to be one. I don't, I don't think just a lot, but again, I don't want to do this and then have everyone upset by me.
So the three people you need, these are just during elections? Or the people you need to run that operation?
Correct. And that, that function into a multi-juris, multi-jurisdictional, that will be hand coordinated through the township clerks, where there are local township elections, perhaps the sign in. But when we have people here in the building, I'm not inclined on a weekend, because we need to make sure that Wi-Fi is working, the infrastructure, so I can't just randomly give people access to the secure areas. I've got staff that need to lock this up in our cages. So it's three to five people to run it, because three is the minimum, no one goes to the bathroom. So you really need three to five.
But just during election times? You're not asking for three full-time people?
Oh, I was only asking for a part-time person for me. The three to five people comes, how many are hired to run the precincts?
Okay.
That's different, and that's not, that has to be, there's no other person.
The multi-jurisdictional, just elaborate, is the township, local clerks hiring election workers and scheduling whether or not.
That's what we're hoping for, you know, they can go over, because one of them can help board, maybe, because at the end of the day, someone needs to be in charge of the things where they handle the results on the night. But I really wasn't here to discuss that, because it's a whole nother set of processes that.
So you need one part-time person for you?
Well, that's what I am proposing, and I'm not proposing indefinitely, because once we know how this works, and if it ever changes again, there's another constitutional amendment that does away from this, or if they decide someday if security is put up here, this is probably not going to be the place to do this, we're going to find other jurisdictions, or a library, or, or something. Because even if we go to two, the thoughts could be, we're talking about February maybe fairly slow, it could pick up potentially for August. We know Elmwood can be busy, I mean, this could be busy, but Elmwood is an easy step for people coming in going to work.
Even for those of us who go to 72, it's not a big deal to swing by Elmwood.
It doesn't catch me, some people may not make decisions that we have to do the power of.
So what we're doing here is feeding the townships, rather than them have to invest in a nine-day individually, we're essentially doing this. So these expenses, including the additional stat, the burden that's put on the county to facilitate this.
The burden is put on the county to get better funding through the state. Several clerks are engaged and have other staff, because I'm not sure that we can assist them in the way we need to with everything else coming down the line.
So I guess, is there, is there then, I mean, what you're telling me is this, this is, this is not a financial impact to this county then, or?
It's going to give financial impact to someone. I mean, some of it's the township, some of it's the state, and there is some that to the county.
And whatever impact there is to the county, because we would not do this if we were not just saying, okay, townships will help you out with this, why would we not ask the townships to be part of that solution?
They are, they are going to be a huge part of the solution, but to give economies of scale, to get more funding, we're looking to coordination of efforts. And in order to coordinate, because we are going from four election days now, that we're going to be multi-jurisdictional, to over 40 days of election, you've got to have people here supervising. We have to have people in this site, not even the township clerks, who somewhat, the township clerks can't order these elections. They can come and make him supervise, and they've also got responsibilities during those 14 days to register voters. Any sites cannot use registered voters, and I can't register them in my office during the 14 days.
I think.
If I know it's not necessary, then like staffing $20, $20 a week, we'll need whatever that.
I understand the economies of scale, I get that. It just would seem then that what we're asking the townships to give would be less because of the economies of scale. I guess I still fail to understand if this is really a township responsibility that we're doing, why any financial burden ends up with the county.
This is a good location, it has the ADA, it has the Wi-Fi, and we've got the space to do this.
And security?
And security.
But we don't have the option to tell them, okay, because this is a good space and because it provides economies of scale, you, you guys each owe X of what this costs us?
I have, I have gotten a turn on my question.
Okay, great, so that's why.
That's another one of my questions to ask them.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I don't want this to call a unit and helping them to say, I'm just giving up six more weekends and meetings and doing myself, I don't need. Get the board to say he needs some help, and then I'm going to do nine to 10 days, 10 hours a day.
Well, it makes perfect sense, so, yeah, I think the.
We don't want you to have to do that.
I'm sorry, I cut you off, maybe.
Well, I guess I think, yeah, that would make sense, we don't want you to do that, but us saying yes to it would be somewhat dependent on, are they going to do their fair share? I mean, it's kind of hard to say that without that question, so.
They are, and they know that. And there are, I think, there are some townships that are going to have a hard time finding this. I mean, there's all three of these states, but they have to report the government bills. But it is one of my questions to ask, but I do, my first question is, are you okay with this being a host site? Even if I got out, say, okay, I'm not going to do anything.
I think it makes sense. People will know they can go to the county building to vote.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes, thank you. I was going along the same line, I want to make sure I understand that. So I think that what you would have is, I mean, I know this is early stages, you have a couple of townships that may not need to have the early voting here, right? Or would, if you do?
All of them.
All 11 would?
Yes, and that's with two tabulators potentially. The state's looking at 10 precincts per tabulator, but I know some of the jurisdictions are going as high as 19. It has to do with boarding and all procedures. So that's why I'm thinking a minimum of two, but we move one here and one to Elmwood, because Elmwood would hire additions that also would help facilitate this. I lost my train of thought.
All right, well, you've got 11, you have 11 township clerks, and you've got some village people, and they have, we don't, they wouldn't be, because the townships handle all the elections? Okay, so, so your township clerk, then. And then they would be expected then to cover some of this nine-day period each time?
They will be covering all the cost of the workers.
Not just the cost, but who's working those elections?
Yes.
They would be here. It might be Mike clerk one day, and it might be Doug's clerk the next. Okay. And then, so, and to be fair, you, you normally oversee all our elections every year anyway. So I know that sometimes you have staff going down to assist with a problem somewhere all over, so.
But not to this degree.
Not to this degree, which is why you bring us to a half-time person that you may need to help.
Right, and if you don't find that beneficial, then you end it. I'm not here to work out.
So that's, which, which I'm wondering is, is it possible that we have a contract election worker to work through this for the first, to see if we?
Or a contract person?
Contract person, that's, yeah, that you would, I imagine you would train.
And I'm just looking to see that you're open to discuss this.
Let's start there. I, I think it's logical. I think, I know this is, this is a burden on our townships, and I, I think that's something that wasn't thought through, and this was voted in. It is a big burden, I know we have townships that can't handle it. So if we can, however we can facilitate it as a county and help, I'm all, I'm all in favor of that. But I would expect our county clerks or their deputies to be the bodies working.
I made a question today, aside from all that, is there any opposition from the board to us being a site?
I have a question about weekend security. I mean, it makes me a little nervous to think that we're doing elections downstairs on a November or February morning on Saturday with an empty building, and the possibility that election workers would need help.
That's the reason myself or one of my staff, and I'm going back to the person, that here is going to be a competition, we have to be here, and that's why I've got another question to the board on Saturdays and Sundays. We kind of need to understand just how difficult it is, is to move it back up to this room, where we've got the vote in and out. But the idea is not to have security standing on the floor, that's not the spirit of what elections run on.
Yeah, and I personally wouldn't, wouldn't think that security on a weekend would be a bad idea, or we're going to the sheriff's department.
The sheriff's department would know that we are here, they would be available if we call for assistance. We just don't want them to be our brokers. And that's why we live here, because I would not be comfortable being three to five workers that are on two points, anyone else going to go and have someone in my office here.
Yeah, we can't come down.
Yes, Kamala?
Can you repeat to again your timeline and when you think the state will get back to you about grants or?
We don't know, I have no choice, we have to submit the grant.
There's no ti, there's no timeline, nothing?
No, I, I, it was pretty intense, when you got eight county clerks coming at you, and you want answers, and I just wrote my answer down. It would lead to the head of the Bureau of Elections, it would be a lot easier to know what we're asking for if you knew what the plan was to give me. If I go to Mason County, and the city of Waddington, it's got six precincts, and then there's nineteen more precincts. The city is going alone handling it themselves. The other nineteen precincts are all going to be in one spot at the district library, and they're funding them all through, so are they going to get two issues? And that's what he's working on to get for us, because we're all asking the same question.
So the equipment that you need, is that going to be furnished by the state, or is it available via through the state, or is everybody going to have their own equipment? Or how are we going to get the cheapest bid, or what?
No, it's already, it's already been out, the state, the vendors will be going to, the building is sent directly to the state. It's if you decide to get more than the state. So for example, in the North Township, we used to be in Elmwood, and we've got enough machines going to go, because you cannot use the machines at our election day on early voting. We have that because we've got security issues, so they don't intermingle, because you still got your two A county clerks. So they will be going through the state, it's the set price, we all know what the prices are already.
Okay.
And if we get two, a lot of two, our vendors will probably be at the cost of going through and determining everything else that they're supposed to be reimbursing based on that, if you want, because it makes sense.
So, so knowing that we, just a sec, and then, knowing that we've got lots of details to find out, is there anybody at the table that would be opposed to urging Michelle to continue to move forward and negotiate with the townships and come back with cost estimates and final plans later?
I guess I just have one question related to yours, I mean, it seems, when you walk in here and you're downstairs, I don't know how one person here makes sure that people aren't wandering all over the building. I mean, that seems like a big burden to have one of our county staff here marshaling everyone that comes in.
We would just, I would think on the weekend, if we could, maybe take maintenance, how we could set this up as a polling place here, and then we've got a lot better control, because it's still ADA compliant, and we have a very good, and it's easy to protect as a concern.
Right.
But we don't want people roaming all over the building.
We, so, so this stuff's on wheels? Or movable?
Well, I'm talking about...
So it's not a huge burden to...
No.
Okay.
Because we have to lock this up at night, and my cage has to be, and someone that's under my authority has to be here.
So I, I didn't hear any opposition to...
We just want to try, because during, during August, we might move to two locations. And that's not going to be, I mean, I want to keep the responsibilities within responsibility to launch, but at the same time, we don't want to make news, we're doing this for...
Potentially, these states don't, don't interfere with, with the, with our meeting scheduled generally?
None of these dates, from what I've looked at, interfere with them, so the whole thing is possible to be up here.
Could be up here, locked down easily at night, less flow, less people all over the building.
Locked down in my vault.
Especially for the ten-hour days, okay, I like that idea.
Yeah, if it's in here, it takes care of a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Plus, we'd have an excuse not to have any special meetings.
Right.
You're on, should be tied.
You sure there's not three hundred and twenty days of early voting?
There's only a hopper, that by the time I leave here, I could have an email that's kind of strange.
Commissioner Ogier, I cut you off, did you have anything, or are you...
No, I asked about the wheels.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Really important question, I was trying to neutralize this.
We now have the undersheriff, and the sheriff, and the finance director.
Thank you, Michelle.
Are you going to introduce this, Michelle?
I do share the other date, so I'll share with you.
It's just daytime, isn't it?
That's on the... Never, never felt so safe. We have video, John.
I think what we decided to do in the last session was, come back here, knowing that there were some bigger questions asked, but at least try to make use of the time, the sheriff was nice enough to, to be available today. I think we'll have, you know, Bill here, if he's not yet. So those were the two agenda items, I don't know what was customarily done, I'm happy to, to sit here, but I'm going to talk to the undersheriff, pretty much, the world's theirs in terms of running through it. I won't, I won't play MC, I promise. I think the focus is, is in your books, public safety, and specifically the components that the sheriff would address, which are departments three oh one, three four thirty, in your, so, is that there?
Yes.
And yours?
And we do have your, your narrative, starting on page five of our notebooks that outlawed...
Great point, because I don't think we've gone back to this part of the book yet.
The supplemental?
But, yeah, it's, it's our all successive thing, that part of our documental information.
And can I just remind us all, this is conversational, I, we're, we're six commissioners, and if the floor is open, please ask questions.
That was a good idea. First of all, the world's changed. First name was a commissioner of work on the set of handcuffs made in eighteen sixty-six at a meat market. Brought them over, showed me you're looking at them, and he said, "You know, we should hang these up over here. We were formed as an agency in eighteen sixty-three, so it's a pretty good history there." So I took it to the trophy, Charlie had a plaque made, and we put them up there, but as I was looking at those, I was thinking, "This is not, um, this is not the sheriff's office of old, this, this, we're dealing with criminal sexual conduct. People are preying on our children with the internet. We have a big program coming up in Sutton's Bay, September twenty-seventh, we're putting on, jointly with the state police and the tribe, trying to make this sexting and all this stuff kids are getting in trouble with. And they're getting in trouble as well as becoming victims, right? These, the predators are out there, they're talking to other kids, and this and that, they're getting caught up in this stuff. It's tying up our resources a lot, it's tying up our cyber capabilities a lot. Our cyber capabilities are targeting, and you will hear stuff coming in in the future I can't talk about yet, but we are targeting criminal sexual actors on the internet who are preying on adults as well as children. We are tied up with all kinds of things in terms of frauds for senior citizens. Our seniors predominate this area, and they're very vulnerable. They're the ones that answer the phone, and say hello, and good morning. It seems like the young generation looks at the phone, and they put it on silent, or they don't answer it. The older people, "Good morning," and these people are experts at making them talk, communicating, and they're really good at what they do. So, our cyber capabilities, I put forward years ago about we need a cyber deputy, and we really don't have a cyber deputy, and that guy jumped on a detective, and now that our detective, which is Mike Banky, is basically overwhelmed with materials that he's trying to cover. In one recent case, he had to go through eleven hundred communications and messages back and forth in text, justifying two to three implicated things in there, and this was a person just very, very guilty, but he has to sit there and read all this tribble back and forth on the internet and go over this stuff. We have to interview kids at schools, some of the parents are caught there somewhere. So it's becoming overwhelming for him to the point where it's difficult for him to do his job. So, we would like to expand one position and create a second detective. So that detective would be drawn from our existing pool of deputies, we have a competitive exam, and, you know, some are better writers, some aren't, some are better writers, some aren't, they all have extremely talented backgrounds, but some are different, some are better at SWAT, or P-9, or, or general patrol, some are better at detective work. So, that's where this request comes from, to look at this new position. And if we did that, then we would add one person to our sheriff's office numbers, that would be a new person we would hire, and it would take one of our existing and promote them into that position. And the position pays just about the same thing as regular deputies, it's not sergeant wages or anything like that. So, we feel it's necessary, the world has changed, and in a nutshell, I'd like to answer questions about that, if anybody has questions about the needs, or what's changed in your comparison sheet that the undersheriff around talks about, Benzi has two detectives, Traverse County has eleven, Traverse City has several, Calcasas is coming too. We have one, and a little bit overwhelmed, so, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell, we agree.
I would just like to say that I had a friend, some friends, that, um, were enthralled stuck, enthralled not, just, just for a week, they didn't know how to get out. And I called you, and you had to say, "We don't do that. We desperately need that, because it is terrifying for people."
It is, it's, some people, it's most of their entire state, and I, I know one, I can't use the name, but I'll tell you one person, when her husband died, she's a very nice person, you'd all know her name if I told you. Her entire savings were built out, because she thought she was helping kids somewhere in Ukraine or North Africa somewhere. Her entire saving, believe me, this is a five, ten-generation person from this, this county, you would know who it is. It's just humiliating, the families, you know, we work with them, we just crush, the money is gone, then you do that Western Union, and we want to be able to help people when we can, and this, this rattles older people to their fore, but it also rattles kids too, because they get caught up in stupid things. Send me your nude picture, and, and I'm going to get you to send me money. And they have ways of getting people to send nudies and fill things, or they put stuff on your phone, it's attractive, you know, they, you know how it works, you get drawn into that stuff accidentally, but then they specifically target our seniors. That, that's very upsetting to me, how vulnerable they are, but it's because they're nice. So yes, that is exactly one of the cases we're talking about.
You said that detective, he would come from the, the pool that you already have?
One of our, our existing officers.
And then you'd have to replace that?
We would replace with a new deputy, yes.
And is there possibilities out there?
We have six in the hopper right now, I, I've talked to, there's eighty-three sheriffs, eighty-three counties in the state, all of our down positions, everybody's struggling, they can't get people fly, we have a pool of six really good people to hire right now. We're blessed, because everybody wants to move here, we're blessed because the healthcare is provided, and we're blessed because we're committed, and working with guys like this, these, these are good people we work with. People see that and know that, so that's, that's where we're lucky compared a lot with our agencies, we do have people in the pool waiting. NMC also has a new program that they're putting on, they're putting on two academies here instead of one. And MCOS, Michigan Commission on Enforcement Officer Standards, is now sponsoring candidates. Benzi has candidates, Calcasas has candidates, Grant Traverse County has candidates, and Traverse City has candidates, all in that academy, but we don't know when our next opening's coming, so we could put someone in it. But their academies paid for it, they get paid a wage, they're guaranteed a job. That's how sorry the hiring is right now around the country with police officers. And I will say this, and this goes reference to the handcuffs we talked about, started out, we must never rest when it comes to security of our people and infrastructure here. It is something that at any time we can lose, it is not guaranteed that we can live in this area. I mean, let's face it, a lot of people don't lock their doors, they leave their keys in their cars, it's a casual area, you can walk jogging down the trails, you're safe, and we're doing our best to keep it safe. But if we ever drop, and we get to the point where we neglect some of these enforcement needs, we can be in a category where someone else finds themselves in. You only need to cross the Thames seventy-two, you find the finest campground, which isn't a campground, but there's three hundred homeless people in there, there's been machete attacks, there's been homicide, there's been shootings, there's been rapes, it's because it started and it got bigger. And it, it's just one of those things that you really have to watch, that we keep the community safe, and our, and our, given our kids in schools, let's face it, we've got eight schools in this county, this week school starts, we will be in the schools walking around, it's part of our job, we do that, and we don't have SROs, some of the counties have, or, or some of the schools, like in Benzi and Grant Traverse, have SROs, school resource officers. They put in for a state grant, they're completely paid for by the state, and they now have a deputy in each, or not in each school, but they have a deputy in their schools to show the schools, so, we're still going on foot, but we're kind of getting down their capabilities, so, that's why we're asking for this.
I've always been a proponent of, of cross-training, and it, and it's kind of concerning that you have just one deputy trained to do all this detective work and working on these cases. He gets sick, he takes vacation, you don't have ready to do in that work. So is it possible that rather than put on, and I'm just thinking out loud, but maybe another full-time detective, can that be shared among other officers? Is it possible to do...
So the licensing is about five thousand dollars, to license them to do this cyber analysis of crime, it's very expensive, and we did cross-train Brian Deon, who functions, so, we're on twelves, so they either are morning or a night shift, right? They're on twelves, so they have one eight-hour day, and they can eat, so Brian Deon's eight-hour day is assigned to cyber.
Okay.
But the cross-training is big, but the issue found there becomes the training, the updates, and the annual licenses, it, it's a ton of money, so we're thinking we could do it and do a good job with two, but the idea that other guys are able to do that, these two are very talented at that, so is Lieutenant Wright, they're able to get in and kind of help. And I will only tell you this, that when you deal with financial crimes, there's a point where you have to turn it over to the PNC bank, or Huntington, or the FBI, but when we're dealing with this criminal sexual conduct, and all these tweets and texts and pictures that they're sending, it's not something we want everybody to see, even within our ranks, you know, we don't, we're not all watching to see all the nudies from, unlike the Sutton's Bay School and so forth. So, basically, they're kind of in a box, where we put them in, they have a special cyber room, you just get a closet, it's draped up, nobody can see it, the access of the chair, so we can keep exposure to the children, the people.
Well, the, the, I understand that, and certainly, there's, there's plenty of public support in keeping this county as safe as possible, absolutely, we just have to figure out how, how to do that, you know, financially, get you one more person if that's what we want to do. Is that the only, so you think that's your only possible way is to put two full-time detectives?
Right, and the, the work is there. We're dealing with a lot of mental health issues, you probably, everybody's got some kind of a mental health issue going on. When we go to a call, it's not just because it's a fistfight between two people at Polish White Interception, it's not like that anymore, it's like, they're struggling with mental health.
They're still there.
I, I had a great time at the Folk Fest, and it used to be a few fistfights, but it's over. What we're having with now is chronic mental illness, it's either organic, they're armed with it, or it's induced by drug or alcohol abuse, or abuse, and what happens is, when these people have no issues, that they're not addressing, and it's not being, you know, dealt with, they tend to sell medicated drugs and alcohol, and then now we're into fentanyl, we're into amphetamine, marijuana, stuff is getting, fentanyl added to things, and that is tying up, this investigation, Doc, what they looked, all the emails involve fentanyl, involve drugs, they also involve CSC, I mean, to go through people's text messages over a six-month period to find out where they got the fentanyl that somebody took, that somebody died, or somebody's kid had, it's an extreme amount of digging, and we have contracts in the road where, you know, we just can't like full-hip off-road, say, "Here detector for the day," because we need to have, by the union standards, so many people on the road patrolling, so. We're working around it, especially, I know it's a tough budget here, but I'm also looking at as, we need to keep Lino Navi on, I'm really big on that, I love this area, I think that's why everybody seems to want to move here, but we protect our senior citizens, we protect our children, we protect the good work the deputies are doing, and the good communication they have in schools, we don't want to get so we keep him, because we're tied up, overwhelmed with criminal sexual conduct and this, for that, so that's kind of what supports this issue.
Well, I think I would, we need to try to support this, this is a core function that the county should be providing, and that everyone who's here wants this place to be, but it always has been, so, I think we should work on trying to make this work. We might have to pinch something else somewhere else, if that's what it takes, but I, I think, I look at your year-over-year increases, and from what you face, you've been fiscally responsible otherwise, so, I, I hope we can find a way to do this for you.
And I would say, and we sit here, the detective obviously is a big ask, because we sit here for our budget, it's not my own budget, we're looking at eleven budgets for the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
I maintain seven, Lieutenant, you're maintaining, there's four for the jail, and seven different ones for the road.
for the road, yes, there's twenty deputies, Sunnys Bay has its own budget, our court has its own budget, T and P has its own budget, there's, there's a lot here, I get we're a big number, the biggest number in the county, but we got to reel them off because of that budget, this is what it is. This is an ask for a general road position, we have an ask for an increase in that category since two thousand nine, and that's the last time we asked for a general road position, that's where the detective falls in that budget since then.
Anything else?
Not only that, I've been over there a couple of times, Detective Venky does a fantastic job, but when you're dealing a case, a criminal case, even a domestic, call the phones, go through the texts, everything, there's only one way to do it, and that's the right way. You can't cheapen up on an investigation, a lot of money goes down and during a lot of, a lot of time and effort, you, we are really underfunded or understaffed as far as the other counties around here, so, I mean, they, he wouldn't just be a, he or she just wouldn't be a cyber detective, he would, they will both fill in and, and whatever.
They'll all function sometimes in need, like when there was the robbery down in Empire in Mon Harbor, we all functioned, but the reality is, just it was brought up, that do we just have one position, are we sharing it? Right now, basically with the cross-training, with the E D S, we get help, that's eight hours every two weeks, we need someone to sit there and rip through material and rip through phones and computers, it, everything, the, the world of the criminals, you probably all see on T V, if they rob a bank, they go home, they lay the guns out they use, they video the guns with their phones, they video the money, they hold it up in the air, they hold a bag of dope, it's unbelievable, it's on your phones and computers, but we can't get at that without warrants, you can't get a warrant without a proper search warrant request, and there's, there's search warrants, there's tabulations, there's a lot of things to do, there's evidence storage, there's a lot of things to do, including all the FOIA requests we're getting now, we as well as the cross-bear's office are overwhelmed with FOIA requests, that seems to be the thing, people understand, every time we're, we're dealing with FOIAs, we're not protecting your kids in the schools, and we're not keeping your cyber criminals, we're taking money from your senior citizens, so it is, it is kind of mushroomed. So I know that's probably all you need to hear from me on that, it's, it's certainly we were justified, and the sheriff did a nice write-up on it, you can read the stats.
I mean, the, the seven budgets in the sheriff's office that were submitted, total overall ask increase outside of the detective, no more than fifteen hundred dollars, that's all I asked for right now, and that was simply because membership dues, things of that nature, we have to go on to, not off, I shifted some money in gas in overtime, not necessarily regret that, and June when I took some money from the gas budget, gas, a month later, but we can't control that either, it is what it is. Overall, we're not asking for any increases, I don't have any questions on those seven budgets, as lieutenant is on his, his increases were also minimal, we're talking minuscule percentage increases in the overall budget, short of this one ask with the detective.
Storage space for the new boat, not in your budget for an extra?
We're switching locations, we're going to store a fireboat in the fire barn, and our barn is smaller, so we'll store their boat and they'll store ours, there's other options out there, like, we're not looking at building a barn or anything, I mean, if we ever build a new barn, looking back on it, you know, it's always easy to say, you look back on it, why did you build a barn with twelve windows? I mean, you build a barn, you spec it out with what you want to cost.
Because we didn't have a project manager.
You need, yes, you need like a project manager or somebody, you know.
I'm curious.
Yeah.
There wasn't a project manager.
Yeah, and then so, and that just happened, so I can't hold that against, so I've talked with fire chiefs, they're, you know, we're like this, between police firing and us here, we all work together, we train together with, with our M C I's or Mashkas, a casualty incident, and we have a lot of training we do in schools, stuff people don't know about, to keep the area safe, and we have a good relationship, where we'll store theirs, they'll store ours, just we don't make differs.
Anything from the jail?
No, not really, the only thing I have, and, and the only thing I have to speak on is it's in C I P, not put into my budget, it was just communication with maintenance director Coleman and myself, in the C I P, I think it's got a level or two need is a dishwasher for the jail kitchen, one we have is eighteen years old, been, it's discontinued for part, the repair voice was actually there today, excellent, I got some numbers from the county, and we spent a thousand dollars a year preparing that machine for the last five years, so the current, I think it's twenty thousand ten dollars for the police staff, so I don't want that, something that in the next few months can be moved forward, can be put into budget, if we need to, we can try to push it off till next year, but there, I talked to the guy today, and he said you're getting to the point, kind of like you murder with your heat pumps, where you can't find parts, you can't find parts for this thing anymore, so that's really the only thing I've got, most part of everything was status quo, I think the only notable increase was to our contractual services, which is for our inmate healthcare service, which has a built-in minimum of three percent or C P I based on national medical, some term, so I think I, I think I figured that high at five percent based on, I can figure out whether that was where to be, other than that jail was pretty much stressful.
Wonder if the dishwasher could be a good two percent application?
You could add it to the reload, pull that up.
That two percent grant, um, you know, it's too much to ask them for something like that patrol boat, so we went, that, that two percent grant, generally those are somewhere between a thousand, thirty thousand dollars right in there, and it's definitely a need, the tribe has been very supportive of us in the past, we have a great relationship with them, and I think that would be, we have a fall cycle coming up on that, that would be a, a very good vehicle to be out with.
Anything else?
So, so just quickly, the, the meals that, somebody comes in and prepares some meals for inmates?
Yes, contractors take these tanteen services.
So they are served on trays or something, and the trays have to run through the dishwasher, and they do that, right?
Oh, no, we actually have an inmate worker, an inmate who does that.
Okay.
But if you look at, you know, and I, I don't know where you're going with it, you know, washing with my hand, I pulled some numbers.
Oh, I never recommend washing with my hand.
I mean, last year, our, our biggest average of the population was thirty-nine inmates a day, so if you multiply that by three, you have thirty-nine trays, you have thirty-nine cups, you have thirty-nine lids for the cups, and you have thirty-nine sporks three times a day.
Oh, so it's a spork?
Yeah.
And we've dealt with a lot of people going through D T Es, we have a lot of math users, people who are in fentanyl and a lot of issues, we were boarding Calcasca and Grand Travers, as well as the Grand Travers van, so we do have a lot of potential for disease, transmission, we had the COVID issue last few years, we beat that thing up pretty good, so it would be, and I, I would think that that would be our best route, go the two percent grid on that, but just make, I appreciate God making everybody aware, it's something we're gonna have to face a little bit.
All said on this one, thank you very much.
Sean? And before I lead to, I just want to say thank you for your support on the vote, it was just a blessing to get that, it took eight years, but we got it, you continued your good, goodwill, and we got that, and it'll be built, and it should be here approximately June fifteenth next year, we'll probably have it at the trade festival, and then come around the bay with it, land at Leon, and it'll be currently based there, so thank you very much for your support.
I just want to make sure from a procedure standpoint, first of all, I appreciate the sheriff kind of, as I like to say, leading the face, so went right into the, the biggest item on the list, around staffing levels, there are a couple of things, I just want to make sure that there's clarity with expected next step, not that there's decisions, but there, the items on, is, I run through my budget considerations sheet, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
What page are you on?
So this is the, the doubt that I had last time, it's kind of a five-page
Okay.
listing of everything that's quote-unquote in the current budget and the items that are not in the current budget, so as we talk about, as we eventually progress to thoughts about what we would include in the next round of using the total budget, the items out there that I see sheriff-related were twenty-three and twenty-four, which we spoke to around internal overtime in the detective position, those are currently not in, just as a, you know, our approach has been to leave those quote-unquote to the side to discuss as, as we just did, the other items on there that, just a glance, if you have any questions with them, item thirty-three, it's donations related to testing that, the type of research session here in September, there's an E D S around that, so I don't, I think that would be a great time to discuss the plans there, is that fair? The other items are, there was a C I P item around body cameras, it's item forty on that list, and the other item on that C I P list that we have on the side was related to the motor vehicle fund, specifically, what was in the first round of budget was three vehicles, and the logic there, if you remember, was that's, that was viewed as consistent with prior budgets in, in the cycle, I think the ask is really for five, and so I don't know if there's discussion now or, or later about those, so I just wanted to draw the attention on those.
So the vehicles, I can skip you quickly, yes, the usual ask is three or four, technically it is five this year, fifth one, and it revolves around the detective, because if we get the detective, we need another undercover car, unmarked car, three are patrol cars, the fourth one is a jail transport van, this is two thousand and eleven with a hundred and thirty year, forty-seven thousand miles, where we ship two employees, mark the south quarter, picking up inmates, it's that point, and let me say, with an inmate in the car, it's to be replaced, so that would be four cars.
So we had a presentation about fleet management.
Yes.
And it, it just is kind of sitting there in the ethers.
I've worked with Sean and the administrator on that, and I progressed and put the budget together for the four, potentially five cars, as if that wasn't going to happen, if the enterprise thing happens, and that other item disappears and gets swallowed into the enterprise, so, I mean, a two-pronged approach here, because I don't know what is going to happen with the enterprise, so I proceed it as normal, with the normal vehicle request, if that does change tremendously, if you go enterprise.
We were waiting for some feedback from other departments or other things before we made any kind of decision.
That's right.
So to go ahead is the right, the right thing.
And I trust Sean, and to be honest with you, to take the overall look at that, because to us, it doesn't matter, we want to drive the same car, whatever works out best for the family finances, whatever is best for the board is good with us, as long as we're driving the same car. You know, I had a hundred and four mile an hour car chase last week, didn't expect it, it was crazy, went twelve miles, we got the guy, he's metal, calling dispatch all night down in Grand Travers Central, we were on our way to SWAT train Cadillac, they came up, saw us, we got this big long thing, these are like death situations, six miles, we followed him without lights and sirens, oh, he's doing a hundred and two miles an hour, followed him through red lights, he was going to kill a family for any minute, I engaged, we got it, we ended up with like a, kind of a court chase tackle thing, got him, put him in, but you never know what's going to happen, but you cook your brakes doing that, because we don't drive like idiots, you know, we, we have to feather our brakes and do things, we go through pursuit and all kinds of pit maneuver driving training, it's a very difficult thing, so all we've ever asked is to have a safe vehicle, the sheriff does a good job managing the fleet, our cars go like about a hundred and twenty-five or thirty thousand now, if we end up going enterprise, I don't know that we'll save money, but they will want those cars back in, this comes from knowledge I have from D N R and state lease, we leased together as a state agency, for all motor carrier, all state fleet vehicles, and they wanted them back at ninety-five thousand, the reason is, they get over a hundred thousand, they lose value, so they can sell them for more, and the repair costs of their maintaining a fleet, which we're dealing with, we're constantly shuffling cars around, so as we lower the overall age of the cars and the fleet, we'll have less repairs, less downtime, officers running back and forth, and we still operate with safe cars, so we really have no skin in the game, as long as we have, it's going to be your decisions and what feels about it.
And the enterprise thing, I know Sean is still going to bring up, obviously worried with re-aging of that decision, and I speak for myself, but I think Sean and I are on the same page, I can't say we save money with enterprise, worst case, I think it's budget neutral, but the overall age of the fleet goes down tremendously, safety and the vehicle we put our employees in increases forever.
My, I guess my concern is at the end of how many years we decide we no longer want to lease, or the steal goes away or whatever, we would be buying fifteen vehicles, right now, we're in this rate rotation, and that's my concern.
That's all, that, that's right, you have to think like, think like you do if you're home, you know, I mean, in your home, you try to think of a business, you try to think like a homeowner, a business person, what's the best, and what if can happen, and as you do those what-ifs, and you lay it out, and then again, we trust your judgment, I know Sean brought up the thing with the Kena coming in September, that's not going to be an ask for money, we raised that money with two golf tournaments, we're going to put a second Kena on, so we can find fentanyl in the schools, and find meth and methamphetamine stuff, so we'll have hopefully a day shift and a night shift dog, which is really a blessing, but we're not going to have to come and ask you for money, because we're going to buy the dog and convert the vehicle and everything, it's over the five thousand dollar limit, so therefore we come to you, and just so you know, so you don't wonder about next week, we're not going to do a bunch of crowd requests from you.
Could you get by with four vehicles instead of five, if, if we got down to the wire and we say we want to, we really want to support the detective position, we want to support this and that?
We will make it work, and then maybe then it would be brought up now, we have just brought it up, maybe then for next year, replace the jail vehicle, because that is quite a responsibility, when you have one or more inmates or prisoners, and some of these people are very, very bad, who go into the worst places of prison, if that breaks down in highway, it's not a good thing, so if, if we had to make four, we would, we would prioritize the detective vehicle over the jail vehicle, as long as we could, though it's probably not going to be, it's a brochure, you have to, if we could make that last one more year.
Oh, we thought he left the room, should have done here, sorry Todd.
If it's not the jail van, I mean, I can figure out the road fleet to.
Thank you. I got a, the incremental overtime, fifty-five thousand to sixty, is that what it's been running?
It has been fifty to sixty-five, I mean, it fluctuates, one thing I never really adjust for, I mean, we, we, all that number originally originated, I couldn't tell you.
Because I, yeah, a fatal accident like I was on with you guys last year, I mean, you spent.
I mean, you never know, ideally, I would think the number is set by our department, the twelve, twelve guys are in the general road patrol budget, and just in gen, I mean, we have mandatory twenty-four-seven staff, so we get to, when somebody takes a vacation day, we're back to them, most of these departments in this building don't do that, we have to have minimum people out there twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, so we have high overtime, just cover vacation time, sick time, things of that nature, then we have complaints, whether it be any or of staffing or a C S C, we have court, guys who work midnights, court doesn't happen except during the day, they get called in and they have to come to court, and that's overtime, because we can't flex their schedule, they need it for minimum staffing, so our overtime is based on all those things to a point that we can control, we can't control them, there's going to be court, we can't control them, there's going to be a two-hour fatal down here in Sunnys Bay, that's going to take four deputies, six hours to clear up, right, and those things are, it's the gene involved that we can't catch.
There's also an X factor on overtime, and you're familiar with this, when someone leaves and goes to another agency, someone retires, or someone leaves for some health reason, which we recently had, we are out in one boat, we don't have somebody already trained that's going through F T O field training officer position, we are paying overtime for everything, and the same way, if there's any extended leaves or pregnancy or anything like that, that's, that's just pure overtime, so it is an X factor, and that's why this late increase in requests.
The second detective vehicle, would that need to be a brand-new vehicle, or can we put a detective in a retired vehicle?
Which is in a nondescript vehicle?
Could we strip out one of our vehicles when they come off, are they coming off at a hundred?
Well, our vehicles are pretty much police-looking, like a detective will sit in a parking lot in a school where kids are doing something like some drugs, they have possession, innocuous possession, we don't need a full-blown police-rated car for that, we can look at a more economical car, but it definitely needs to be nondescript.
So the black SUVs we got, there are others on the road, but, I mean, the only way I can tell is when they're coming at me and down the side is this gold sheriff, I mean, until you pass me, I don't know it's a sheriff car.
Well, the, the people, but that's because you don't do anything wrong.
Yeah, we're looking for you, and you're not looking for us.
Yeah, if you live in a different world, the people who are selling drugs, like for instance, a detective, will deploy them to sit in a parking lot, let's just say it's a parking lot at the Y M C A, just throw it off the, and they're going to sit there and read a book, or they'll turn your story on real loud, or, the whatever, and just kind of fit in with whoever's doing what, then you can't have anything that looks like a cop car, because the people are so. Then you can't have anything that looks like a cop car, because the people are so furtive who do that stuff.
The spotlight's out on the outside, or a big giveaway right away.
Look, the plain jeans, tires, around here.
All right.
But we don't have to buy a whole police rated vehicle for pursuits for that. We can look at something more like what a normal person would drive.
The current detective vehicle is not a police rated vehicle.
It's not? Okay, I didn't know that.
So the cost is far lower.
Okay.
It don't look like any other car department.
There's minimal, the only thing that goes in it is the radio. There are no lights, feet up, and we have the radios, so the cost is a regular bill.
Thank, thank you. Thank you.
And one last thing, and that election thing you talked about, we're here if you need us. Even if it's a weekend, you just, somebody just call over there and say, hey, let's get a little rough over here, we need someone here, somebody needs to rest, we'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm surprised you didn't ask to be an electric undercover car. I'm just shocked.
I thought.
They're quiet and sneaky.
Because they're quiet.
They're a hundred and four mile per hour chase wouldn't have worked.
Your battery goes dead.
Can we, can we deal with their probate and family court, and then we'll take a break? So Cameron, Sean, you want to introduce this?
Sure. So. Exactly. The easy, this is, I was anxious to kind of have the session early on. I know Cameron was in front of the whole board of this, or it's been recently. There are moving parts here, and a couple complexities. I think one of the complexities is it's the mismatch budget periods between the state and this year that we're on. So I know the chairman's already signed off basically on a budget that Cameron submitted to Michigan, the HSS, whatever you say. So there's some, some items that I've been looking at to make sure that we kind of are consistent with that submission. At the same time, as part of what Cameron talked about, the moving parts between our childcare and probate pieces that are in here, I kind of think, to logically think about what's happening, to me, it's the combination of Fund 292 and 296, one is which if you call the grant, and the other is childcare, kind of their fund. And so it's almost like I have to put those four things together in my head to make sense of the moving parts. And so you look at those in your budget books, I have some of that detail behind it, I don't want to overwhelm with it, but you're going to see, you would see some, if you look at individual line items and trends within each of those budgeted departments or funds, that will happen, that we can talk comprehensively. But I think Cameron had, you know, some speaking points, and I'll try to help if I can, what I've looked at.
Can you let us know where in the book we should be?
Yes. So.
What's the easiest one? Easy one, first?
Justice.
The probate court budget, three seven five one four eight.
Is it under justice?
Yeah, justice.
Justice, but. Justice. Probate court.
And there wasn't a budget narrative for that, was there, or was there?
There is no specific narratives in this area.
Is it hard? Just one page?
Thirty-seven of eighty-one.
What? Thirty-seven, thank you.
Thirty-seven and thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Yep, okay. Gotcha.
So do you want a narrative? Because there's not a lot to say about this. This, this is a very typical office budget, right? General fund budget. It includes the judge's salary as well as the probate register and the chief assistant Sometimes this spring or summer, the assistant probate register's position would move from four days a week to five days a week, and the budget you see in front of you shows a continuation of that. The only other real changes on here would be in the court-appointed attorney line item. You've probably heard this from other people already, maybe, but indigent defense work this coming year is going to, the hourly rate is going to go from a hundred dollars an hour to somewhere between one twenty and one forty an hour. So that is attractive to, to local attorneys. So we, we cannot keep up with it, we understand, but we're currently paying ninety, and this budget reflects an increase to one hundred dollars. Having said that, for as many years as I can go back and look at it, we've never exceeded the appropriate amount for attorneys. There are a few line items on page two that we have reduced. Mental health services at the top. We don't, the probate court, we have hearings in regard to mental health issues, of course, but in terms of actual services, we don't really provide a service to those, to those people who come to court. Those services are provided by other entities. So I cut this amount in half this year, just as a, more than anything, it's just to maintain that line item, but I don't anticipate spending that money.
Just one, we talked about this earlier, but the only time I can kind of think that would ever be used is at times a person can ask for an independent evaluation of their mental health status in a guardianship case. And the court law consider says it's on their dime unless they petition the court for assistance. We've never paid for those independent reviews, not even had any, but especially that might be the far in between being that ever paid for independent second payment.
The other line item that, that stands out is, is a reduction in printing and publishing. Probate court typically does not publish announcements in the newspaper, so that, that amount is typically not expended. So I just basically left a blank folder in there.
So there's an eight thousand dollar increase in buildings and grounds from last year, and an eight thousand, thousand dollar charge, increase in computer charges. So since there's only like ten thousand, you're only asking for nine thousand more, you have cut things elsewhere.
So just a note on kind of where you went, Commissioner, so the, the items lines nine forty-one, the computer charges, nine forty-two, coffee machine charges, nine forty-three, buildings and grounds, are items Cameron would have necessarily submitted, those would be allocations.
Right.
And so we can huck to those probably in an allocation, so that you.
Right. I understand you have no control over that.
Question about the judge and Cameron came to us, and we approved a, a temporary, and we said we would consider a final decision at budget time. That is now in this proposed budget here.
It is now.
This is where, this is the, they're both right, so.
Oh, you're good, Sean.
But remember, our practice has been to pull out all of those stat date increases, and at the time, the board approved that, we asked that we revisit that at the time of budget. And so it is in their current twenty, twenty-three spend, but we, we, we look at the list, we in effect, first round here, not put you to a position where that's in effect included by the.
So salaries do not include that in the twenty twenty-four proposed budget?
In the proposed.
And that impact is in the.
Staffing level.
Staffing level increase, yeah.
Originally one.
I got a question on seven oh three, which is salaries non-working holiday. It looks like it's on page one. Twenty twenty-three, year-to-date is six hundred and one, and budget is thirteen ninety-nine. We're going up to nineteen eleven. And going back to twenty-two, it's thirty-five hundred dollars. Can you just explain what that is?
In twenty twenty-two, the previous board allocated a salary line item to the probate register instead of being hourly. And that was by a legal opinion that the probate register, as well as the family court administrator, are to be salaried and not hourly employees. So that's the difference in the probate court. It will be only for that twenty-eight hour employee for holiday pay.
I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? That was the easy one, right?
That's the easy one.
We like to start easy.
The other ones are tied together very closely. The other ones meaning the family court general fund budget, three two five one two two.
Which is where?
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight. I'm not comparing.
That's right. That's it.
Circuit court family? Yeah.
And, you know, which of those under pages, thirty-nine and forty also. We're going to, we're going to kind of talk about these at the same time.
We don't have a thirty-nine, forty, oh, down here? No, that's portion maybe.
I have a thirty-nine.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight. Oh, it just said.
Thirty-nine, the childcare fund, on your, on your pages.
Oh, it's under, under other funds, yes, under other funds, on two ninety-two, is that we're going to camp?
Yes.
Yes, so under your other funds tab, or, is it other funds or special? Sorry, special funds. I haven't looked at these. Special funds, funds two ninety-two and two ninety-six.
And that starts on page forty in your books.
Which row?
One forty? Forty, forty of eighty.
Want to connect. Sure.
So the reason that these are.
Good idea.
Mostly related is because we have moved.
Childcare fund.
We have moved a lot of general fund expenditures. We do buy accounting out of the general fund and into the childcare fund. Reason for that, of course, is because childcare fund expenditures are reimbursable. Right? So for every dollar we take out of the general fund, put into the childcare fund, we get fifty cents back. So the more things we can take out of general fund and put in the childcare fund, the better it is. That's as simple, that's as simple as I can put it. It is, it's a no-brainer. And if it's legal to do, put things in the childcare fund for those expenditures. So in this, in this budget, we have moved half of John Boonstraw into the, into the childcare fund, half his wages and salaries. We've moved half of Madi's wages and benefits into the childcare fund. And then there are two case workers, Theresa and Ryan, who you know, who have been being paid at seventy-five percent of their wages and benefits have been in the childcare fund for some years. And this budget reflects that. One hundred percent of their wages and benefits will be in the childcare fund, but another twenty-five percent coming out of the general fund being put into the childcare fund. With me?
Yeah.
Except for a can't see.
So you're going to see a big decrease in general fund expenditures and an increase that you've already accrued for the childcare. The in-home care component of the childcare fund was higher than it was in the previous year, because we want to maximize reimbursement.
So base, is that like a fifty thousand dollar gain done for overall?
All told, all told, we moved a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars out of general fund, put into the childcare fund, for which we'll get back over seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so seventy-eight thousand.
That's a lot.
Well, it is. Yeah, it is, and we appreciate that.
That's enormous.
I was just, I was just comparing.
Trying to find out totals with them.
Twenty twenty-two.
Can you show us, or tell us where that number actually is?
Where's that total represented? Out of, the out-of total, so I could see the into total, but I can't find the out-of total.
Here's the, this is the challenging part. I'd be happy to share detail. How I had to reconcile this for myself is lay out the six people that Cameron is speaking to. So those people are spread out between Departments one thirty-two, which you're looking at in your book, one fifty-two, where half of Cameron, Cameron's salary is where he sits today, Fund two ninety-two and Fund two ninety-six. And so I'd be happy to share, I can follow with this if it were, I can run out and make a copy right now. I've split each of those six people appropriately, so it's not just salary and wage, but it's each of the pieces that I think are people-related costs, from overtime to healthcare to MERS. So each of those, what you could see is, is where they land, which is kind of where Cameron's jumping to in total. So I can assure you, I, that if you buy into the, the premise that he's, he's making, which is, I'm trying to get the maximum out into Fund two ninety-two, it's reimbursable, I could show you the from and to, because it gets really, here's a long state there, Commissioner Redd wrote back to the twenty, looking for a friend.
You can see some of it there in the headline, if you look at Circuit Court, Two Home Offers of Department Total, there's a decrease of fifty thousand dollars there in the headline number. And if you look at Circuit, District Court, Department Total is a ninety thousand dollar approximate reduction there year over year. So I see that's the bulk of it there.
Again, I hate to speak to numbers I did not hand out, but if you bring it all the way back together, which is where Cameron's headed, the, the absolute increase in salary and wages is, is, is very understandable, but it's within the range we've been talking in terms of just merit increases in total between these four funds, differently than.
Except we were hoping that it would go down because of the change in the reimbursement rate, from fifty percent to seventy-five percent.
And that makes dollars.
So can, can I speak to that?
Is it, is the number based on that reimbursement not changing that I'm looking at right now?
Today, what's in, so again, I hate to, I hate to rain on the parade here. You go, these were all set based on June thirtieth numbers. What's happened since June thirtieth is Cameron's approach, had a budget with the State of Michigan. First of all, that was all done at a fifty percent reimbursement rate. What's happened since, even since that event, is the news that in the future, we will move to a seventy-five percent reimbursement rate. So I think there's an opportunity in steps here to take those to move forward where Cameron's going. We talked about it prior to this session and thought it would be easier just to speak to, first step, what's in the, what's in the proposed budget at the historical rate that was there effective June thirtieth.
But, but yes, but I mean, I assume this budget is all going to take place during the seventy-five percent reimbursement rate, right?
Correct.
Sort of. Sorry, the state fiscal is October first.
Nine months of it, right?
Yeah.
So nine months of it.
That's fine.
But still, that's a, that's a computable number. I mean, to use your term, figure-odable.
Figure-odable.
Yeah.
Your side dilemma, and I'm happy to do this.
And the thing is, and the thing is, the seventy-five percent could take place if it's falling in.
And because we're going to say no to a lot of these requests, it's important that we have realistic numbers, so we don't say no to some based upon erroneous information. So I think we ought to correct it to the seventy-five percent for at least nine months, so that we know what we're really likely to have.
I would prefer not to do that. And because I want to bring it back to you, a, a. And because I want to bring it back to you, a true amended budget, a true amended childcare fund budget. You've already passed a childcare fund budget that does not include that reimbursement. And I thought we're getting a carton from a horse a little bit. I'd like to bring back to you the real budget from the childcare fund that may reflect what Commissioner Russell was saying and presents you how that should be done.
The sheriff just came in and said he needed five cars. And our five vehicles. And I don't think we have enough money for that unless we find someplace to get it. That's why I think all of our budgets need to be realistic.
I wasn't here for the sheriff portion, so I'm sorry about that. When it comes to your childcare fund, it's something that is monitored by your finance director. So in the event you do receive your seventy-five percent, the trigger number within that childcare is basically by board approval and by Sean and Cam working together to fund that fund. So even though you may see an increase from the general fund out of like a hundred and some thousand because you're not reflecting the revenues in the two ninety-two, that is directed by board action, as well as Cam and the finance director, on what gets moved. So your four hundred and some thousand that was plugged to balance that budget could end up only being a hundred and eighty-nine thousand next year. But again, you're budgeting to, you're putting that figure in there to have a balanced budget. So I see where you're going. It is tough when it's in October one to September thirty, you know? Because even Sean and I have had the conversation, we could actually be amending this October for the positions that Cam is looking for to project to the state this year and see a cost increase or a decrease on the general fund, increase on the two ninety-two, and not have to move money because the state will facilitate. So it's a very moving part of how it's reported and how it's functionality of how the money's moved between the finance director and Cam. Does that make sense?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not a bit of.
Okay, so.
That's why we did the easy part first.
That's okay.
Just to try to keep this from being too complex, childcare fund is a complex animal. But in just terms of trying to make it as simple as possible, I'll start back from where I started, and that is the more we can get out of general fund, which is not a reimbursable fund, and put into the childcare fund, which is reimbursable, whether it's twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, it doesn't matter, that doesn't matter.
Correct.
Really, what matters is that we're getting reimbursement from the state for those expenditures. Right now, you're not. For every year prior to this year, the things that I've put into the childcare fund now have not been reimbursed. There's money left on the table.
Hundred percent with you right there.
Let's just keep it at that. If you want to go line by line by line, and I can show you, you know, up close reimbursement, where each of those things have been decreasing the general fund and gaining from the childcare fund, we can do that. But I've done that with Sean, and our numbers match.
I don't think anyone was asking that at all. There's any doubt that we understand that the money's been moved, but in moving the money, it's twenty-five percent, or actually it's fifty percent more reimbursable than it was. It goes from fifty to seventy-five percent reimbursable. So the full expense has been moved to the other account, and there has been no accounting for the fact that you're gonna get reimbursed for that. And I think that's the question we're trying to drill down to, is if that's, yeah, what is that amount? And because we're trying to make other decisions, and we just, you know, it seems unreasonable to pretend that that money is not there when it's going to be. We know that, from what you've said, until the end of the year, our fiscal year, we don't know if that will happen. But we know for certainty it's gonna happen for seventy-five percent of the year, right? From January one through the end of September, your reimbursement will change. So that money then is available then, right?
So if you took the childcare fund, just the line item that's, we call it in-home care. Right now, it's fifty percent reimbursable, and I think there's four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in there right now. So half of that is coming back, you know for sure, right? Two forty-five, right? If it goes to seventy-five percent, then you're gonna add another hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to that.
But I didn't think that was an if. I thought this is state law, this passage, Jan. 1, this happens, right?
It may happen sooner, but that's still being, still being, I still have the childcare fund candy that's working all these details out. And who said it earlier? This is enforced.
I didn't.
And it is. I mean, the animal is, we're making airplane on the fly now right now. And that's not unusual in state government.
So let me ask, is there any chance it doesn't happen after one-one?
No.
So that's a known then, right? I mean, no matter how I look at it, that's a known ending, that we know that from one-one till nine-thirty that happens. And that's not a figure-outable number?
Figure-outable.
I don't think anybody said anything wasn't a figure-outable. What I think I'm trying to understand is the board's desire as we go step by step through this process, every day, every week, and it'll happen again next week. So we'll have board meetings, executive, and we'll make decisions. We will. And as information becomes available, there'll be opportunities to update the number that I think everybody's focused on, which is how much of the general fund right now would be drawn down. So the number in my head is nine hundred and sixty-five thousand some dollars. And what you're, if I understand, what you're looking for is help as we have these discussions to put opportunities and risks on that board. And we could monitor and move on. And eventually, we'll strike another date when we say, let's roll all of that through what we've discussed. And we've had consensus about, yes, put in a fourth sheriff's vehicle, or help put in a fourth sheriff's vehicle. And as we do those things, I can help, just from an information standpoint, kind of keep that tally. What we're talking about in this case, I believe, is the revenue side of the equation and what comes back from the state. And so.
And that won't change for any of your general fund budgets. That's not gonna change. All I'm doing with the general fund budgets is decreasing the amount.
But to your point, I can have a line item that shows the impact on the revenue of fund two ninety-two from fifty percent to seventy-five percent as a placeholder.
Correct.
It won't be reflected in the book until, you all tell me you want it to be reflected in the book, at which time we crank everything through and we have a new, we'll strike a new item. Does that make sense? I feel like.
Somewhat. I mean, the sheriff's cars or not cars is our decision, we haven't made yet. This is a known, this is a known thing, we know it's gonna happen. There's no doubt, it's in law, so it's hard for me to figure.
Well, yes, but I guess my other example would be three weeks ago, we didn't know we were gonna get a grant on a marine vessel. Should that be in, should that be out? Is that a twenty-three item, is that a twenty-four item? And what's the timing pulling those things in? The world will continue to march along as we go through the process here, I believe. And I'm totally, I believe I can help in this role, kind of try to keep a list of what you see opportunity with. I'm using opportunities and risks as words. Here's an opportunity. There's seventy-five percent grant available starting January first. Could you pull that into an opportunity line so I can see it? And we'll put that against the nine hundred thousand drawdown that's currently out there in the proposed budget. Does that make sense?
I think I understand it because we think we're gonna get the revenue, but we've estimated what we think we might have to spend, and that hasn't changed based on reimbursement rate. Because we're gonna have to spend it before we get reimbursed.
Correct.
That's why I had my.
Okay, so it's a cash flow issue, but not a net number.
Even though we may have budgeted, I forgot the number, four hundred thousand for in-home care, if we only spend two hundred thousand of it, that's all that's seventy-five percent reimbursed, not what we budget.
Right. Oh, yeah.
So.
But that's a good point.
So that's a good point.
And hopefully, it doesn't end up being that hopeful.
The childcare fund, but it is, there was a huge part of it.
Right. Yeah, we don't want it to be.
Also, we use, but.
Any case, there's something there, somewhere, at some point, maybe.
So.
You want to give me good news to be so hard?
So what I'm hearing is you guys aren't gonna need as much money next year, but you can't predict that yet. That's just anticipatory and expected. Are you asking for more on anything in here?
I think the trade is well.
Okay.
Other than that, you have a special request for equipment that's after this discussion, right? Yes.
This is September.
This will be in that. Also on the docket for September is.
A recording request needs to be updated, and that's on your docket, September eleventh or twelve.
Possibly paid for out of twenty-two or three.
Well, when we're applying for a grant, just like circuit court and district court did, they got it. We're not now. It's a fifty percent grant, but we're asking permission to apply for that grant, and it'll be crunched. I think, well, Representative VAS will also be here in September, but their quality is in the range of thirty-eight thousand, which is similar to what they did for circuit and district, and get a fifty percent grant. So potentially nineteen thousand-ish would be stopped and funded.
Okay, thank you.
If you can move that.
Which is in the budget, not additional dollars.
No, so, yeah, on a capital improvement process like that, the board, all capital improvements are held off and make a board decision. So between the grant application coming in September, and that's going forward, then Sean, once you approve that in September, he will then plug that in as a total capital of the nineteen thousand dollars for there to be spent.
It's another perfect example, though, just timing-wise. I forget who asked the question, twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four? Cameron and I have talked that it could be close. So to me, that's an opportunity or a risk. Is that paid for in twenty-four? Does it show up budget-wise in twenty-four? So we can talk each one of those and we do, we have to get that. That actually is on our list as, I don't know, forty-nine or fifty.
And sometimes with situations like this, when you're so close to approval, and you get the grant, you know, if you go through the grant application, it is one of those things, even though I know you don't like to say it, that you amend in twenty-four. So it could be end of year December, if the money is appropriated, it's gonna be spent in twenty-three, or one of those by board motion.
Well, Cameron, thank you, Judge, thank you for your work.
It is, it is good news, so thank you.
This is what I like doing.
Thank you for your efforts to maximize that. It's not trying to appreciate that, I'm just trying to understand the math.
It's the childcare fund, it's a wild animal. And it keeps changing, so.
If you have other questions, this is the board.
Stop up, I'm telling you, I love talking to you.
Thank you.
Can you tell?
Thank you. Did you be opposed to a five-minute rate?
No.
No, no, thank you.
Welcome back and thank you. And we are now down, and Deb, you're gonna kick us off on the HVAC module?
Yes.
Sean and Deb?
I think, I'll take the lead on this one for now. So we've asked Gary, our representative from DNW, who assists with the county on a three-day-a-week to be able to help us to kind of limp through this HVAC situation that we're currently in. So we know that we have an opportunity going forward to look at bids that are gonna be coming here in the next sixty days, if not sooner, for a proposed alternative to the current, our heat pump scenario. So just to kind of, real quick summary, the building was built in two thousand and seven. And so the heat pumps that were initially installed in two thousand and seven have a shelf life of typically.
Twelve to fifteen years.
Twelve to fifteen years. Okay, so we're at that fifteen-year component, past that now, sixteen years. So if you look at it from that perspective, we know that we're at an end-of-life system. And we've been limping by primarily because Gary's been able to help us to replace those heat pumps as needed, while the board has been kind of deciding what's next for the system. So with that in mind, we, based on the questions that the board had at the last session, asked Gary to come and talk a little bit about where we are currently with our current system. So can you just give us a real quick overview? How many heat pumps we have, how many of them are working, and how many of the original have been replaced?
Cindy, as you know, he just said, I've been here since the beginning of this building. And this building became active in oh-seven. I was assigned this job October second of oh-seven, and I think we've been here ever since. There are ninety-five heat pumps in this building, including the pumps and the boilers. What we're seeing now is a trend of the smaller-sized heat pumps that are starting to fail almost predictably. We've replaced twenty-one heat pumps in the critical areas that would need appliances and the water. I have currently, right now, eighteen of them that are not working. Not working means air compressors or the internal components are to the pump where they've seized up because of the action. Let me say this. These heat pumps run twenty-four, seven through sixty-five. So it would take a quick calculation to figure out from, and I'll even go back to October second of oh-seven, they have been running all this time pretty much reliably. But what I have seen, as I brought up, is the trend of the smaller heat pumps, and we have eight different sizes here in the building, eight different tonnages, okay? But the smaller ones are starting to fail almost at a predictable rate, predictable rate. But we're able to keep going. So let me say this, that whatever I'm able to repair without damage to the building or damage to me, we do that, yes. The other problem that we've run into is the refrigerant that's used in these back in oh-six, oh-seven was a standard refrigerant, R-22. R-22 has been phased out, it won't make it anymore EPA regulations, and what's in the rules now, once it's done, used up, escaped, you can't use it anymore. They do make a couple of blends of retro fit refrigerants, which I'm actually looking to incorporate into this equipment, just to keep it running, okay? But with that thought in mind, and what I'm trying to say to you, in addition to this information is when we do have problems and it is repairable, the ceiling, the splashes come up in that area, the heat pumps come down, we can do whatever repairs. So the buying, it isn't that critical because, like you said, we've got seventeen years on this equipment. I mean, some motors, the controls have been running that long. So if it gets to the point where you pull it down, replace the defective component, put it back up there, and then a year later, you've gotta do it again, that's where we run an issue.
So Gary, how has it been getting the parts and being able to get replacements for the heat pumps that we currently have that need to be replaced?
Okay, for the most part, Climate Master has been very good at these components. But what we're running into, of course, is the typical excuse, supply shortages. We currently have three in critical areas right now that are scheduled for replacement, but they're eight weeks out, which seems a little strange. Now, these are not a plug-and-play device. They have to be configured right from the factory. In other words, voltage, water, and then the ducts. Where's the duct supply and return come in? They have to be preconfigured before we give them. That's why we do run into this issue. But supply chain is still an issue in our board, if you will.
So if I can ask a question too, I don't wanna preempt the board, so if you have questions, just. But the heat pumps, in terms of a HVAC system standard, that's not an outdated concept, right?
No, not at all. Actually, they're still wide, we use their, and they're a very efficient, effective device. Back when this building was planned, let's go back to oh-five, oh-four, whatever, that electricity was very affordable then, okay? And we didn't know that. And that was the way buildings were to be done. Because when the buildings are built, they have to be built as a sealed unit. You can't take and open the windows up because then you contaminate the air with pollen, dust, and everything else. So that's. So that's why these buildings are sealed the way we are, and we have a heat recovery unit, and we have these heat pumps. That's why this building, which is 60,000 square feet, has 95 heat pumps in it. And then a lot of the offices are parallel together, so that we don't have an annoyance on heat pumps.
We have DN, or multiple businesses are making bids, as we understand, for this project. I think the original phase two, phase three was 3.5 million. That initially was established, I think, two years ago?
Yes.
So we really are not sure, operating on that assumption, we're really not sure what those numbers are going to come in at. Can you speak to what's happening in the industry?
With our engineering firm here, like you said, it's almost like playing the futures market, okay? Where we used to be able to get at least a 30 day guarantee on a price, it's now down to a week. In other words, when we need it, you call it, and then what happens is, is because of the supply and demand factor, if you need it, you order it right down there, put the money down on it, and it's dedicated here. Now, we, as a company as large as we are, we have a lot of suppliers. We always have an A, B, and C list. And what's going in here now, because of these heat pumps, we have to use the best quality we want. In other words, water furnaces, and then of course, Climate Master. They have upgraded these heat pumps immensely. We tried using another brand, but we found out that it was too noisy, so we discontinued using them. But that was done at halftime, because we were under the impression of we're going to be told we're going to keep things going. But that's, that's not a problem right now. But it depends on supply and demand. That's why it's kind of hard to give an accurate price as far as these heat pumps, because it depends on their availability and what configurations that we need.
If we replaced the 74 heat pumps that haven't been replaced, just replace them, would that fix our needs?
To a point. It would fix the mechanical needs of these heat pumps, but we have also parts of the infrastructure. In other words, we have base pumps, the cooling tower is becoming an issue, and then the HRV unit downstairs, the micrometal, that is becoming to the point where it's hard to get parts for that, because that was a special built piece of equipment for this. Now, that doesn't mean that that can't be changed out, it would have to literally be dissected and something put in its place. But I am currently, in our request, I'm still currently trying to find certain parts for that, so that I can give some sort of an accurate price as to a rebuild of that unit. So I can't give you enough information to make that work fly. But we do have an issue with some of the piping. We've got some scalable debris floating in the heat pump loops that's causing a problem, but that's mine. Maybe more than that is needed.
The new system, I have no idea what's being proposed. Is it just a upgrade, a different set of heat pumps and a improved chiller? Or what, what is the, what is the narrative of this system in a five senses?
Well, the original idea was, because these heat pumps are becoming labor intensive, cause prohibitiveness, if you will, this new system, and I actually went down to Grand Rapids to witness this thing, it's called a chilled beam system. And for simplicity sake, if you knew what a hot deck cold deck system is, in other words, you've got a pipe of chilled, chilled air and warm air. There's a DAB damper, variable air volume damper, and all it is is just a box with a blade in it. And it goes from hot to cold, depending on what the room sensor tells it to do, okay? That was the whole purpose of doing this, where we have a boiler system around the perimeter, which is beautiful for the heat. This would take care of all of the outdoor air, condition it, and send it to the various areas. There's an awful lot of these, what I believe, free air handlers and these DOAS systems that would go in here to replace the heat pumps.
And that was the, that's the only option that we have, based on?
Well, that's what that engineering firm committed, that's be the best option for this entity.
That involves piping, hot water and cold water, a little bit where you don't have that.
And not to mention the ceiling removal.
Right.
Now, re-grouping a lot of piping, including fire protection, we've had to do that, you know, some of the replacements in these heat pumps.
Wasn't it too, I just don't mean to interrupt, but that there's phases, so like certain offices have to be closed?
Yes. Because the ceiling is literally going to be taken out, and then whatever piping and or especially the electric, had to be, had to be re-grouped to take some of this stuff out, to put these special devices in the ceiling, and then the ductwork could be connected to it. Now, the engineering firm that we had, they were going to use everything we have in existence with this ductwork. So it was going to minimize the interruption in business. But like you said, we've got two floors that are the main trust of this whole building, so it would be done in stages.
So, so for some, for some, Gary, we've already talked about this before, like when our heat pump went down, we're like, is this what we're going to experience when you put the chilled in? Because those areas that they're working on will not have any cold, there won't be a heat pump, so you're only going to have baseboard heat.
Yes.
During the transition.
During that transition.
So some of us are used to that.
That's why it's going to be a board game. I have to give this to you.
Versus just replacing the heat pumps. And then you don't need any system changes. Is there any reason not to do that? Because then you don't have to be taking out ceilings and, I mean, heat pumps are still being made.
And they're still being used for the product. But in answer to your question, what the original, two years ago, so when this was all brought up, it was the fact that the maintenance costs for just keeping these refrigerators running was quite substantial. And that's what preempted the thought of having this whole system revamped. And now, as you can see, things have changed.
On the other hand, if you just replace the ones that are bad, then we don't have to do any rework. I mean, I guess I'm not understanding, why change the system if we're going to have to go in and change piping and ceilings and?
Yeah, the original trust of that idea was to cut back, cut down on some of the maintenance costs, repair costs. That was one of the main trust back then.
But if you, if you replace the ones that are about to go, you know, if we just did a healthy replacement, wouldn't those costs go down? I mean, they're good for 10, 12 years.
Yeah.
Plus, a couple of years ago, you weren't able to get the heat pumps. You were going on eBay to look for parts, and so since then, you've tried this other new, new Climate Master?
Uh, no, water furnace.
Water furnace.
Yeah, that's the.
But the chilling system that these pumps use is failing.
Yes, and that's called a cooling tower.
Cooling tower.
That's called a backco brand name.
That's the big one outside the back door.
Yes. And that was put in there, which is fine. It is, it's in such a way that the cement wall in the building acts like a parabolic effect. So when the sun comes up over there and shines down there, when it gets to be 90 degrees outdoors, that cooling tower isn't strong enough temperature transference wise. All it does basically is the anticoast loop that's in the, into these heat pumps, those through pumps was out there, those through tubes, water gets sprayed on it, and the air gets blown through there. But if you've got 80 to 90 degree air through there, it's not doing a lot of cooling, it's what's called a delta T. So when, when it gets very warm out there, some of these heat pumps, because of the demand on them, will actually lock themselves up, wait till it cools down, and then we go back to scaring up again. This is what has happened over the last 16, 17 years.
So are we, we, we were, we were at this point a few years ago, and I forget, was it two, was it only two years ago? And one Commissioner Prishard, he felt like we could continue for a number of years on the heat pumps, get the parts off eBay, the EFCO, we'd work for a couple of years, and deal with this down the road, and here we are, down the road again. So have we reached that point where we've got to make the decision on finally getting a system that's going to work? Or can we limp this along for a few more years? Or is it time to bring the engineers back and to give us a presentation on the chilled beam system? Or is there another system out there that?
Let me say this, the, the other systems would require the same amount of arduous labor. Ceiling removal, ductwork, if you choose to do an air handler that way, it would be a matter of how you control the temperatures in various offices. So this engineering firm, I'm not with this tool beam system, because apparently it has a lot more control capabilities. But in answer to your question, as far as the heat pumps go, they're reliable, but it's, like you said, it's a form of cost, because you already have them replaced, you already have the ductwork in place. So that would be basically up to a major decision.
And we have you in place, where now we've got.
He's a permanent fixture.
And we'd have a great contract with the induction, which we really appreciate. I mean, we got you here, and that was part of it, and, and so you know this system inside and out, it's all part of it, but.
But as we speak, these are, the heat pumps are being used in new buildings all over the place. I mean, I'm aware of several.
It is a viable system that other organizations are using, so it's still considered to be, it's not outdated, it's not, you know.
But no consideration was given to that, as to just replace heat pumps and upgrade a couple of pieces of equipment that need to be upgraded? It just wasn't thought of at the time, or?
I can't speak to how we've evolved to this point, but.
It's because it seems like a much smaller number than.
I think that, yeah, I think that, so the chiller is one of the things that you guys are working on getting a cost for us right now. To see, cooling tower, to see what that, so I would imagine within the next 30 days, by the time we have the bids, we will also have a more accurate quote for what a replacement of the chiller would be. And then we have the ability to decide a phased approach to updating, or a major overhaul, or whatever the board's choice would be. I, I know that, you know, Melinda and Ty certainly have the benefit of time, and, and even Commissioner Alguayer as well, so to know what's the best.
Yeah, I just, I just don't see yet why we tear up the building when we have a viable system. I, I guess I'd like to see the two prices. A price for replacing the chiller and then taking out the ones that are in trouble, instead of going through tearing up offices.
Adding to Commissioner Alguayer, I mean, that, that would be, there's always a context to scale. Once you mobilize and do something, I mean, to come in and out and change them one at a time, it'd be interesting to see, okay, what is a comprehensive bid to three contractors' price to come in and replace the 70 remaining heat pumps? And, you know, improve the system the way it is, I mean, maybe it's not the best system in the whole world, but if it's a million dollars less, I mean, it's got, the other system has to be a million dollars better. I mean, that's why you make these decisions. I mean, everyone wants the best, nicest thing, but.
Well, like I said, back then, the idea was to cut down on the labor and the maintenance costs. But with the, with the new system going in, there'd be three air handlers and a lot of ductwork, there'd still be heat pumps in the core of the building, because the core of the buildings, the warmest of this whole thing.
And there'd be some sort of fan coil unit?
Three of them, yeah. And then there's the HRO, and then I also need to point out too, that in the new system, we asked them to incorporate two steam humidifiers, much like the ones that we have on the jail today. That's part of it, because this building does not have any steam humidifiers. That doesn't mean that they couldn't be put in, but I just need to bring that up, so that, you know, that's part of the equation for consideration.
Yeah, I would, for, for me, I would like to have somebody convince me that replacing the heat pumps and the chilling tower wouldn't fix our problem at half the cost, or whatever.
Yeah, and is it, is a chilling tower a million dollars, is it 50, is it 500?
No, no, nowhere's near anything like that. But like I said, before I could even begin to give you an accurate account, or whatever, where you need apples to apples. You know, so when I could call them up and say, this is what I've got, what's the cost, and then I can get back to you on that. That is part of the information that I'm trying to obtain for them.
So, so Gary, last year, they replaced a lot of the copper pipes. Was that just baseboard heating in some of the offices, or what was it?
Well, when you said replace the copper pipes.
With it, in the probate in the back hall, they brought in, and they put the aluminum.
That was for the baseboard heating, yes.
We had it.
Yeah, that wasn't for the heat pumps.
What is that? It's not even, it's probably two different systems, right?
Yes, it is, two different systems.
And the scale in the pipe is an addressable issue, that's not uncommon, that's, it's not.
It is an addressable, and it can be corrected.
Right, flush the, flush the system and?
Normally with all of the heat pumps that are done, usually within two years, you're done with cleaning screens.
Yeah.
But even just before I came here, I see that I've got two heat pumps that I've got to deal with. But we get a certain scale, scaling that happens here, and without going into too much detail, we did have a ruptures 10 years ago, and on and on and on. And that is probably part why we're seeing some of the scaling effect flowing into the system. You're talking about three and four inch pipes up there, and when they're, they're called what's called a groove block, so they've got a rubber donut that goes around, so it's just simply some of that stuff that gets stirred up and dropped into there. And then all it takes is a little agitation and gets proven again. But we do have an expensive set of filters in there now, but it's possible we may need to add another one just to start clearing some more of that out. But that's what's going on as far as some of the break in, I have that whole heat pump block now.
So it sounds like before we do any more on this, we need the prices for both options.
Yes.
Right? And, and, and the expert opinion on, on why change?
Well, the engineering firm, of course, is working on their proposal and the necessities that they have. In our, or in my world, I'm working on just the basic repairs, all these heat pumps, which are basically right now about 10,200, let's just say that's a fair assumption. But like I pointed out, I have not seen a whole lot of repairs, and I'm not superstitious, but the larger ones, meaning all of the courts, these, this room here has two of them up the hallway downstairs. So far, they've been, they've been running very well.
What was the original brand of the heat pumps?
Climate Masters.
Climate Masters, okay.
Their, what can I say is, they're in the comfort in the top class, like water furnace and Climate Master, the tranquility series, they're with what we call a Cadillac class heat pump. There are other companies, yes, but we look at dependability, long time running, and parts availability.
So I just asked, are we, are we comfortable with that other number just being like a, nothing as scary as a combination of those things? Or is that something we want to have a more disciplined look at to say? What's that?
We need to look at it, not all in, all in.
But I, that's what I guess I'm saying, I mean, I, nothing as scary as doing the legwork, but is this something we call someone and say, I'd like to see a proposal on this system from an engineering perspective and?
We can have our engineers be here at the September meeting to give kind of a, like at least an overview, how did we get here? Because I can't speak to how we got here, and I, you know what I mean? And so there's obviously been conversations that have happened that have led us to this point. I'm not exactly sure what that conversation was. So I think it would be helpful to have the engineers come, speak to why they recommended that system over what we currently have, and as a rework, I think that might be helpful.
Well, for what, you know, there was a complete study done on this, in this envelope, this building, and it, we should have it on file somehow.
We do.
Okay, I'm sure.
Well, if we have engineers from a company that's putting in a bid, they're going to sell us on why, of course.
Well, it was an engineer, no, those engineers are not with DNW. Okay. They're a separate engineering firm that's been managing the project.
But they're certainly invested in their suggestion. That, that's, you can't dispute the fact that they probably really like what they suggested.
Yes.
Just let them know that we're kind of interested in just fixing what we have, and talk us out of that if they want to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks for your work.
And our treasure has been waiting here patiently for us today. Thank you, John. And the last topic on our agenda is to talk about potential funding sources, right?
And I have lost my. Is that one yours? Okay, well. Okay, well, Jamie says.
John's got one.
Is it the same one?
Thank you.
Yep, all right, sorry. Thank you. Everything good?
All right, sounds good.
Great risk of personal peril here. I'm going to go with my gut and John can back me off the edge.
The cliff?
I'm going to go with something and then we can, I wasn't sure whether we wanted to go here.
Yeah. Sorry, I could have helped you here.
Yeah.
Oops.
Thank you.
While John's passing those ones out, I believe Chairman Wessel, that last time, I think
I understood an ask, which was, help me with the list, my, my budget considerations list. There's a lot of stuff on there. Could you help me pull out some of the items that maybe?
Let's, let's take just a minute, so we don't lose people.
John, you're killing me.
Now, we each have three pages, right?
So it's have three?
The common bank, the DTR cash and.
Investments?
And investments, okay.
What is capex?
Capital expenditures.
That's too easy.
Big, big things.
That's too obvious.
It's like figureoutable.
Yeah. Big, big things we buy out of normal operating.
You can tell.
Okay.
Now we're set, Sean, thank you.
All right, sorry.
Sounds like a swear word.
It's not like you slap your ex-husband, it's not.
So I believe, Ty, that you asked to try to parse about part of that list, my five pager that's called budget considerations that we talked about last time, and pull for the, make visible maybe some of the key items. And so there's some discretion in this, please allow, if I didn't get this right, but I wanted to bounce off, I think the right place to start is the one that I handed out earlier, it's called 2024 capital funding considerations. Do you have that one?
Yep.
And so here's the link between those. If you look on the left side of that page, I, I don't want to create confusion with moving away from the original list, so I made a reference to the item numbers on our, on our budget consideration list, just as a reference point. And tried to pull up the ones that were either significant, either starting with permitted expenditures, and I, I therefore did that because I'm new to this, so, but they're things that I believe, my definition of permitted is the board's stated intention to, to go forward with those items or statutory requirements to do so. And they included things like, which shifted on us last couple of weeks, the Great Lakes Patrol Boat, the drain commission items that are sitting out there, point broadband specifically, and just so Commissioner Alguier knows, I hear her, the line item that doesn't have a reference, but is District Six or the remaining unserved pieces, pieces of the county with broadband, as well as.
Thank you.
The, the Lelandon Tower has an item that hasn't really been a budget conversation yet, because I think we've been considering that mostly as a 2023 item. But if you'll stick with me for a minute, I wanted to pull those all into the top of the page here. The other items under that green section, critical or timely county assets, what I pulled into here are items that, and this is the judgmental piece, that felt like I heard an urgency, critical nature, requiring repair, for example, the first two, number 38 and 59 with the, with county DM. And beyond that, the building and grounds items that we were just talking about with HVAC and heat pump, but also north facade, lower level build out, exterior cameras, real asphalt in the park, resealing the asphalt parking lot, those items that felt like they were structural in nature were past a timeline when we would have been on a maintenance cycle, they're, they're capitalized assets. And so I pulled them all together and I think, but, please correct me, Commissioner Wessel here, I believe what we are trying to get to is that total line on the bottom, which was, what are we talking about here? Which is, when you add all those items up, it's in the five, five and a half million dollar range, which is in that yellow row on the bottom. The reason I pulled in the 23 items is because I believe that we are headed for discussion on some of the same funding sources on those items. So in that very far right corner, funding source, I noted next to each of them, what I've heard floated around, for example, with the Great Lakes Patrol Boat, we made our pocket $525,000. We believe we will get a grant back to timing of that grant, sounds short term in nature, we could model it or show it as a 2023 item, but, you know, we won't totally control the receipt of that. But I, I was trying to catch the funding source with each. I believe all the drain commission items have, have been viewed as general fund today. The point broadband, which I believe that there was a suggestion, at least when conceptually it wasn't, didn't want to go there immediately, but DTR was a portion of the remaining 1.8 million that was out there, as well as there's ARPA funds that are uncommitted. I put 800,000 in here just for reference, I think that number today is actually more closer to 850, but it's in, there's around eight to 850,000 dollars in that. And we know that historically, each of the towers is in the 500,000 dollar range. The challenge with some of these, like that tower, you know, we don't have a complete project plan on that. So I don't mean to imply by any means that there's known dollar amounts on this, that's my disclaimer on the top, this is just for illustration. But I wanted to test it, this is kind of where we wanted to go, and I'm sorry for taking the floor, but just to lead into what I think John wants to talk about, if you go to that second page that I just handed out, is the one that says on the top, it's got a green column, it's called example hybrid model. And so one of the concepts here, I think that we maybe want to consider, or if we're being creative with how do we address the challenges as we're looking at a, a type of, you know, the proposed budget, as we've discussed over the last couple of sessions, there's a thought here, and again, just for an example, if we are going to repeatedly look at some of the items as coming from something sourced like by DTR, for example, the timing starts to become critical. And what I was trying to do is, sometimes we look at these as annual episodic events when really they're not. When you have to, you could explode this into months, I went down to quarters, for example, with this, to show that really what could happen here, and my example would be in quarter three this year, we drew down DTR $545,000. We're going to receive a grant at some point, and you can play with this. Say we get that, it's a good year for the federal government, they come in in the fourth quarter and give us $400,000. The example here tries to show what would be a simple tool, if you will, that looks like a debt schedule, that you could start to think about, I don't want to use the word reuse, but you've drawn down on DTR now, can we consider using that for other capital expenditures that we know are on the horizon? And the example with that is what we have been talking about for the, down in the piece where I'm showing the negatives. I don't know what schedule we will hit with broadband build out next year, but I took the million dollars and said, what if it was over four quarters, for example? Could you, could, can you start to think about as a funding source almost, you know, the, the receipt of that grant back on the boat to offset interim funding needs without going back to a funding source and, and continuing the, you know, where John's going to maybe head with both DTR, but also as you start to think about if we had to go bond ourselves or actually borrow for some of the things. So we are kicking around ideas with hybrid models, loosely, I think we invented that word, so I don't look that one up on Wikipedia. But there are some alternatives with that that we could explore. I believe those were the questions that were asked of me, and maybe we bounce to where John went and we can swing back, if that makes sense.
So, I mean, so perfect, so anyway, you guys have seen my graphs before, I said they, same graphs I presented to you earlier in the summer. But what they demonstrate is our cyclical inflow and outflow. And you'll see for DTR, that in May and April, every year, I have a big expenditure, which is highlighted in green, and it hasn't gone above $4 million in the last three years. General funds, common bank account, just looking at cash balance, not looking at investments. This cycles between $25 million throughout the high peak, down to under $10 million in the beginning of the year. So timing of when we incur, incur these expenditures and pay them out is going to be critical for us to sell, fund these projects. If we were to take 100% of these asks and had to commit them today, we likely fall short. But if we had tackled these and approached these systematically for the next 18 months, we would have a better chance of looking at funding these internally rather than go off the bottom. That is what could caveat some sort of revamp on the HR. If it's a $4 million ask, we simply don't have the resources for that. We would have to buy, have to loan, we would have to get the money somehow in order to accomplish a $4 million remodel on HVAC with.
So just, just to clarify, when I look at Sean's first number and he comes with his bottom line number of 5.7 million, and then I go to your graphs and your projections, you're saying based on that 5.7 number, that this is doable between DTR and general fund expenditures? Is I understanding you correctly? Because you're just talking about 4 million for HVAC and there's only two penciled in right now on that other left, so I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding the baseline that you're presenting.
Yes, what we're looking at internally is the DTR that has 2.4 million dollars of liquid, and we have approximately a million invested that we would get back over the next 24 months as far as some maturities go. So I wouldn't be able to give you a three and a half million dollars today, but the DTR could be drawn down up to three and a half million dollars.
Over a timeframe.
Over an extended period of time.
And then there's another 2 million of general fund that you feel you have to, because I'm trying to get back to the 5.7.
Yeah, this isn't, so don't take my, as I put general fund here, I think that's been more the historical approach to funding items like that. I think there's an alternative with this. I was, this is just kind of the opening ask.
Opening valley.
Yeah, and where I was going, Commissioner Restrepo, was that John's point, there's a marriage between liquidity of investments that he's managing to, the ultimate balance in DTR, as well as the ability to, with a schedule, which was my other one, the little hybrid model, if you notice on the very bottom of that, I was just keeping track of at any point in time, how much have we drawn down on DTR there. So I feel like there's a, if timing were managed, could we, could we accomplish not, not putting ourselves at risk with DTR balances, but also accomplishing what we need to do with a, with a broad down schedule that would, that would more reflect what happens intra year, intra, intra year. Because I think there, you know, when, when you just throw out the dollar amount, but you realize that some of the items, and the one that I wanted to put on here, but I didn't want to kind of trump, what Gary was just talking about is, for example, if you started to a heat pump exercise, how, how long of a period is that? And you, I believe that, talking in the hallway, you know, that's not a, that's not a, they come in over the weekend and plant them, you're talking about an extended or a phased approach to that. And if you start to look at some of the phases of that and the need to, the timing of those outlays compared to what John has on the other side, which is liquidity within that DTR fund, for example, how much can we manage to? And so I threw it out as an illustration right now, but as, as you solidify which ones are priorities and come back to the list, it's, it would be a way to consider how much could we fund with available liquidity.
So I can just reinvolve that, just follow up on the question, if I can still try to fully understand. I understand the timing is critical because it's airflow as well as a.
Right.
But let's assume your timing model is, that happens that way, or even better, then the 5.7 is a number that can be covered out of current resources?
There's still assumptions that have to be made, and that is that the federal grant for the Great Lakes Boat comes back in.
Right.
Can be reappropriated. Now, it's, it's not covering 100%, we're over, stating some of the drains a little bit, but, no, I mean, we would be flat, we would have room for more resources.
And I just a question, Ty, I'm looking at the 500K on the tower, didn't, don't we have a cost year on that? I thought that was a toll tower expenditure, not our county expenditure, maybe I'm wrong on that, but.
It's Jerry Land Electric and Leland Township, each, each band, our bill is less than 200.
Okay.
It's a great example, though, initially, though, we're out of 250 or 500.
We'd go to that somewhere.
But then that, that reverse should be somewhere else in our illustration example that isn't there right now, right? So it's going to come back somewhere. Yep, okay.
So a couple of comments. If we decide on an entire revamp of our heating and cooling system, we're going to have a big number that would, that we wouldn't have to pay all at once. But if we just get our current system to the point where it's manageable, let's say we buy 20 heat pumps and replace the chilling tower, that is going to be a cost that, much lower cost.
I'd probably go and buy for county and probably for the county. It's a lot easier than.
Revamping an entire system. And also the point, I think they're still building next year, so that money also is going to be doled out slowly. I'm hoping we get a number, we're waiting for a number from Spectrum on finishing District Six and part of Seven. They are there now, so if we have them finish, it'll be less expensive than having them pull out all of their equipment and then coming back later. But that money will, we will need to come up with sooner, but we have the ARPA funds, the 850 that's sitting there.
We're using those to clear up the remaining balance.
We were not supposed to touch those, and we have to be very careful how we use them.
We're suggesting we use them because we don't have enough funds.
For what?
General fund with DTR to cover, so we're using some of the ARPA money to cover the balance. We have three and a half million dollars.
Well, then just know that there's 850 out there that's supposed to go to District Six.
It's just a recommendation.
What is a recommendation?
That the 80,000 or 850 be appropriated to finish the point broadband.
The 5 million.
Yeah, you're short. But when we did this, there was never the assumption. But when we did this, there was never the assumption that District Six and Part of Seven would be just hanging out there in the breeze. We didn't spend that money because we were, it was being saved to make sure that the entire county got covered.
We'll deal with that at a different time, I bet. I bet we hear it again.
It's important, I'm going to repeat this as many times as it takes for you to get it.
I have one quick question on the HVAC, because I hear phase three. What is?
Phase two and phase three are actually combined, that 3.5, at least that was the initial.
It's trying to be nice.
That was the plan, that they would be done together, and that together they represent collectively 3.2. I think it might be a cooling unit as well as construction. I have to admit, as I'm sitting here, I'm drawing a blank, and so.
So the 1.9 that we have here, we're going to see bids when they come in of 3.3 or 4, because they're doing.
The whole project was, phase two and phase three was 3.5.
The scope of both of those projects are in total just to fix the heating problems in this building, correct?
Correct.
It's the same problem, phase one, phase two, they can't represent the entire building on that.
Yeah. What was phase one, by the way? What did we do at phase one?
Phase four.
Phase four.
Yeah.
So that's really not stranded cost right now, that probably would have had to be done.
Yeah, they did, they decided to nix it from the original build.
Yeah.
They thought, they thought the heat pumps would do it all, and they broke.
And if probably, if they did that, I assume that would have been needed no matter which way they went, because, so it's not, it's not.
It was like a mandatory fix.
Not stranded cost right now, so that wouldn't be a bad spend no matter what we did going forward.
Mm-hmm. I can look to see, though, because we have really in-depth minutes on this whole HVAC presentation, like, I think this is my seventh time sitting here. So we can certainly go back and pinpoint where these discussions are and let you know, maybe you'd like some Labor Day on your road trip reading. We could, you know, point out to where.
Nothing I like better than instead of my vacation, working on it.
Right, to really read through those documents.
Maybe we could have a podcast, so you could drive around listening.
For different funding sources, I've got with Huntington, and so this Excel spreadsheet is Huntington's proposal, it's just internal use, but for a 10-year note, total payment and borrowing cost would be 5.1, interest portion would be 1.1, and that is at 4.95% interest. Seven-year note, just a different amortization, so we'd be paying slightly less interest. That's 830,000, $110,000, and total payment and issuance would be 4.8. If we were to go out for a bond, we would be able to get a lower rate, but there's higher issuance costs and a lot of legwork in order to get that accomplished. Sean has got a lot of information on that. But as far as I'm concerned, the borrowing rate, even at 4%, still puts the total payment of the board at $6 million.
So how much, okay, so 303,000 a year.
Yeah.
Versus 692 versus 5.
Right.
Something.
So these are just talking points, these are not recommendations.
What I've heard today is that if we, if we're careful what we spend our money on, we won't have to borrow money.
That's what I'm hearing.
And if we time it right, and if we're strategic.
And I think that what comes with that, tied to that point, is the diligence or the controls around, we're probably entering a different phase of our lives as a county where if we go down that path, we're going to have to be aware of cash flows and focus on even where some of these are revenue items in between, you know, budget cycles and the convergence of investment balances and maturities or durations with when we commit to those. It, I believe, as it gets tighter, that naturally comes with it. The one other thing John and I talked briefly about, I spent a little bit of couch time doing some Googling on what's involved with this, is John went towards public placement. I think there's a number of considerations with that. One of them is being rated, and so I don't believe we've been through a rating agency for a decade.
Yeah, 14.
14. So there's time with that, there's cost with that, there's interruption of daily workflow with that. But if the desire, and again, none of this is a recommendation, nothing other than illustration kind of things, but I think there is a consideration of if we go that way, timing, lead time to do that. I think you're talking, it's not days or it's more than weeks, it's probably, you know, somewhere in between a month and a couple of months, and cost involved. And if you want, for reference, you can go look at what Grand Travers County went through in 2019 and what their take on the county. The other thing with that, we touched on issuance costs, but there's also, with that issuance cost, I think the thing you start to bump into at the minimum borrowing levels is that that cost of issuance is higher on per dollar on a small denomination bond rather than a large one. And so I think that is, where John was going, and again, all of this was just a group of numbers, he went out and sized, said, what if it was 4 million? And I think what we bumped into, John, don't want me to put words in your mouth, but I believe the reaction was, you don't want to go too much below that. I mean, it starts to become a different, you have to do a butter wing if you think about it.
And so if we overextend ourselves with the borrowing and expenditures, we're going to have a negative response from credit agencies because our balances are lower and so on and so forth. It's advantageous for us to draw down our funds to a point, as long as we still are able to handle the incidentals that come up. And back to Sean, as to the conversation at budget, is the CIP. We don't have a sinking fund that we utilize at the county or capital projects, or we've done an allocation for future projects. We don't utilize the CIP to budget, we use it as a recommendation. These things are going to come into play more and more as the tighter we get, because we don't have the luxury of putting a million dollars into investments and sitting on it right here. I'm going to have to put it in commercial paper for 200 or 70 days because I need it back to base bills. So there's going to be a lot of changing, you know, as far as procedures go, when you draw things down this close, but it's something that we're equipped to do.
When I think I'm here is like, A, we have to make sure that what we're spending here isn't a nickel more than what it takes to get the job done, so we have to be very careful of what we spend. And then B, we might be able to say yes to something, but it's going to be, well, you can't say yes until I say yes. So yes, it's going to, might not be September, then it's Jan. 1 or something, until cash flows allow it. Still allows, it's a great planning tool, letting it know that it can be done. The timing issue is just something that might not make everyone happy, but that's, we have to do what's right for the county and the taxpayers and tighten our belt a little bit on this stuff.
To your point, though, and prioritize those that have reimbursement.
Right.
Knowing that those are going to come in, let's get these things carried in the process, whether they're either in point three or first quarter, 24.
Quicker we get the money spent, quicker we get the money back, right? Yep.
I think we're aggressive with grant writing, with opportunities with that. We have not really, you know, pursued the RAP grants and some of the other things as arduously as we could.
I think we really have to take a really hard look at this HVAC thing. I mean, if I'm understanding you correct, we're, this number here isn't even, I mean, yeah, there's probably another million and a half there that we haven't seen yet, which then.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so how are we doing on getting a grant writer?
Well, the grant application has been submitted, and we should hear the 1st of October, I believe, the first few weeks of October, if that grant funding has been approved.
You know, when I went to the NMCA meeting, five of those counties said, it is worth spending the money for a grant writer, you will get much more than you spend. So there's money out there right now.
And we have some great talent here in the region in terms of grant writers.
So I'm just wondering if we should be waiting, because they will pay for themselves, and you pay a percentage of the grant that they get in. I mean, that's how you can do it, is that we're not giving a salary, they get a percentage of the grants they are able to get.
Do most grants have an administrative fee that would support?
Yeah, but I think that's different than, I won't get paid anything until I get the grant. That's not.
But that's what, that's what counties are doing. So perhaps we shouldn't be waiting, because there is money we could be walking past.
Yeah, you know, we get, I'm really hopeful. I guess why I like the idea of contractual grant writing position, to see how we do, and I'm hopeful, but the problem comes is that they, you know, you see what they say, well, you're such a wealthy county, you don't need it, you know, and it's just not true. Right, you know, we're doing our best to be favorable up here, we do have a segment of very wealthy, but we've got segments that are not so wealthy, so I'm hopeful, that's all I say.
One of the issues for, with a grant writer is there are kind of specialties. I mean, Trudy is a grant writer for all things housing and brownfield, and if you have a grant writer, they still have to find the expertise to do the grant writing of a particular grant.
They need to speak the language to that, to that particular discipline and know well enough to make their case right.
Well, maybe I should talk to the counties that talked about it, and I'll find out more particulars, because perhaps we shouldn't be waiting.
Well, thank you, Sean.
It's good that we applied for the grant, but.
Any last questions for Sean?
I just say thank you, this is very helpful, and appreciate that.
And it sounds like you're a good juggler. You and John will be juggling.
Do we have what's next? Which departments or which?
So what we had planned, I believe, but tell me, I mean, I think we went into this knowing that it would be fluid.
Yeah.
I believe the next session was the 11th, and that was the day that we kind of put all the other, the department heads did not, have not come forward yet, that we would ask them to be available. So if we continue down to that path, I know Commissioner Restor has concerns, the big items are on a different rail here a little bit, but that was what was next, but we can adjust.
I'm okay with that.
Well, we're not going to have any more information by the 11th, right?
No.
And other than, no, in terms of some of these other things like we're waiting for for the board meeting, there are some things that we're hoping to have those answers back, and we won't have bids yet from HVAC, that won't be until October. So the reality is, you know, we will most likely be looking at an October timeframe to be really finalizing a budget that's earliest.
We'll be listening, taking notes, but we can't make decisions until we.
But we could have a special meeting in October, or we, you know, to finalize.
I think there's going to be elections during that time. I'm just kidding.
For the meeting on the 11th, we will invite all of the department heads that have made budget requests here. Prosecutor is there, Building Safety, correct?
So we also have a meeting scheduled on the 14th, right?
Uh.
That was on your list.
Yes.
And.
Sorry, I don't remember everything.
And the 19th.
Those are dates that have been put in there as a whole, yes, for future.
And I'm recalling what Jen said about the fact that we perhaps won't have final numbers that we can approve until November. And perhaps we should do the final, I don't like putting off the budget, but it sounds like it would be more accurate if we did it in November, because we will have more information on HVAC, et cetera, et cetera. Are others open to doing that?
Try for September.
Well, I think it's better to take a little more time and do it right. I mean, I'd assume better, yeah.
Right, because whatever Sean, whatever you guys decide, Sean has to fix and create, propose to adopt budget for the public, for you then to come together and make a recommendation and executive that that regular session when you have a meeting to open it up to public and then close that and approve your budget.
So it's a reasonable backing up in time, what's a reasonable?
To November.
Yeah, okay.
So are you open to, does that work for you?
I work for you. So we have to do what we do. I do think in the interim, because Russell's question earlier, we don't have to wait to the end to have a running list. We've got a number of items to come up with, the sheriff today with Cameron, that we can start to work down on this, so you have a running tally, if you don't, kind of where to sit. I'm happy to do that. And if I don't get them exactly right, I think the value is in the discussion.
Yeah.
Making that.
Ranges of numbers is better than no numbers. And so I'm very happy with, you know, 75 to 125 as opposed to, I think it's a lot, but I don't know. I mean, that's hard for me to do math with that, so.
I agree. I think today was incredibly helpful.
Yes.
So are we open to waiting till November?
I think we ought to just wait and see where we are and how soon everybody feels like we're ready.
So, just FYI, since these meeting dates were decided last January, I will be gone from October 13th to like November 7th.
Let's have the final budget meeting on October 15th.
You're cute, but you're not that cute.
So you're saying just wait till November.
All those in favor, aye?
Just don't have any meetings in late October. And I want to thank Commissioner O'Rourke for putting a bug in my ear. I think that if the sheriff gets an additional car for a detective, it could be a hybrid, and we would save gas.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Before we go to public comment, we do have a message from Commissioner Kramer, and she was not able to join us, but she is watching the recorded session. So she will come to the next meeting with this background.
And that's the 11th, the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So we are now at the part of our agenda where we would welcome public comment. Yes?
Hey, Tyler, I'm Ashley Leno, and I wanted to give you some information regarding Elon Musk has a new Starlink internet, and every address I put in for Leno is available. And I don't know how this works with your contract or if this can help, but one subscriber asserts that it is lightning fast. It's $120 a month, there is a one-time charge of $5.99 for one-time.
Equipment charge.
So this is kind of a game changer as it links satellite trains.
Did you say $5.99?
$599 for the equipment to install it. There is a box that goes in the house, and then there is a small piece of equipment that actually moves throughout, you know, and it's linking to the satellite trains. I don't know, a couple years ago, I actually saw the satellite train, so they're like a string of satellites, like two doubled strands of satellites. And we saw them in the, in the sky, and we thought they were the best. But what they do is they, I guess, go around the planet, and the little pieces that they put on your roof just tracks us, and it's always moving and rotating and connecting. And it's a standalone system, so you can get internet without having to put any kind of fiber optic cables, I suppose. So I'm just wondering if that might be a solution to the internet problem that we've got ourselves into. We certainly have to finish it, right? And it doesn't look like we have enough money to do that, and I don't know what the contract And it doesn't look like we have enough money to do that, and I don't know what the contract, is that, like, law disentance contract, and if that could be helpful. And the other thing that I was concerned about is, we have an $80,000 in this budget, it's a wage study to review equity, and I'm not sure what that is, but it doesn't sound like it's something that we need, a wage study for equity. Does anyone know what that is? And why are we spending money on that when the car, the sheriff needs another car? Let's give him another fifth car instead of spending $80,000 on a study. $126, thank you. And I saw a facilities director, is this a new position for $72,000 a year in that budget? Are we just continuing to add employees that are going to further jeopardize our burners pension situation? So I would really like to see a focus on, there's another salary, a 1.75 employee raise, we need to stop that, flip the boss of any hiring that's not an emergency until we get these holes in our budget addressed. And that's basically all we.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Thank you for coming today. Any commissioner comment? Yes?
I would like to comment on the Starlink, and that obviously could be an option for some people. A lot of people live in the woods, and they cannot access, I've got a lot of folks who try. Also, I sat at a lunch table today with somebody who waited three years to get Starlink. Likes it now, but three years is a long time, but a lot of people live in the woods. That's the beauty of our county, isn't it? And the challenge in our county.
Any other commissioner comment?
So thank you for that update, though.
Well, I would say that we appreciate your, your feedback on, on the budget book, and you've obviously looked at, all that's in here are all sorts of proposals, and that's what we're meaning for, is to try to set priorities, and everything in this book is not going to be spent. I think we're ready for an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.